Good evening. The meeting will now be in order. I see that there is a sufficient number of voters present to allow us to open the meeting. This evening, we will continue the annual Town Meeting Warrant, taking up the last of the four articles which were pre-scheduled for last night, and that's Article 26. We will then return to where we left off on Monday night and take up Article 11. This evening, the gymnasium is the only venue for the meeting, and voting will take place only in the gymnasium. To vote on tonight's articles, you must be occupying a seat in the gymnasium. Live coverage of the meeting will be broadcast in the cafeteria, so that those who are taking a break in there may follow along, but no voting will take place in the cafeteria at any time. I would like now to invite Fire Chief Tom Judge to tell us what we need to know in the unlikely event of an emergency. Chief Judge?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a quick safety announcement, folks. There are four exits in the gymnasium located in all four corners. If anyone's taking advantage of the childcare, and we do have to evacuate, please do not go to the childcare to pick up your children. They'll be escorted by the staff to the courtyard outside the cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Judge. On behalf of the meeting, I want to thank Fire Chief Judge, Police Chief O'Connor, and both of their excellent departments for their service to us during town meeting. I also want to thank the fantastic Town Meeting support staff, who put Town Meeting together, and they do this job after they've already finished their day jobs. So, thank you. You know who you are. On Monday night, the meeting elected Ms. Carolyn Flood of 1289 Main Street as Deputy Town Moderator, who will take over the duties of the moderator if she is unable to fulfill them, and Mr. Stephen Eng of 12 Dalton Road as Assistant Moderator, who will take over the duties of Deputy Moderator if she is unable to fulfill those. I want to introduce our elected and appointed officials, who are tables at the front of the hall. To my left is the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. At the table in back of them, in the front row over there, we have our Affordable Housing Funding Committee. And to the left of the auditorium, we have the Finance Committee. The Planning Board is also here this evening, and they'll take up a position at a table in the front when we get to the zoning articles. The Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, and many other boards and committees have burned a lot of midnight oil, understanding and analyzing the issues before us tonight, and you'll hear their recommendations on the articles as we take them up. You can also find the Finance Committee and the Select Board's recommendations on the articles in the front of the Finance Committee Report, which is available on the tables in the cafeteria. The Finance Committee Report, which also contains the full warrant, is well worth spending some time with, and I encourage you to do so. You'll find it an excellent window into our town's current and future financial picture. And if you haven't yet stopped at the tables in the cafeteria to collect materials for tonight's articles, you will want to do so. Some of the articles will be moved as printed in the handout, and many of the articles are further explained by information that's on the table. You'll also find a green booklet out there entitled Town Meeting Traditions and Procedures, and it is the procedural guide for this evening's proceedings. If you do have questions on Town Meeting Procedure, I invite you to consult with our able Town Meeting Resource Person, Dr. Susan Curtin. Dr. Curtin is seated in the front row. I'm going to ask her to stand and wave, so you can see where she is. Thank you very much, Dr. Curtin, for serving in that capacity for us tonight. There's a questionnaire about Town Meeting on the tables that I very much hope that you will fill out. We're particularly interested in how folks are thinking about electronic voting at Town Meeting. And there's a box in the cafeteria for completed questionnaires, or you may drop them off later at the Town Clerk's Office. And the questionnaire is also available on the Town website for people to fill it out electronically, but please, one per person. I want to remind you that many boards and committees will need new members right after Town Meeting. We tend to have our membership cycles tied to Town Meeting, and the town is ever in search of citizens willing to fill those positions. So if you may be interested in working directly on issues that concern the town and getting to know your community better, I would invite you to fill out a green card. They're also out on the tables in the cafeteria. You can also find that green card available electronically on the Town website to fill it out there. I have appointed Mr. Abe Fisher of 400 Hayward Mill Road to be Head Teller, and Mr. David Carr of 82 Lawesbrook Road to be Ballot Supervisor, and Ms. Cynthia Rainey of 80 Hunters Ridge Road to be Assistant Ballot Supervisor. Mr. Fisher will supervise a standing counted vote, if we require one, and Mr. Carr will supervise the counting of ballots, should the meeting vote to take a vote by ballot. Mr. Fisher, are the tellers ready to be sworn?
We are.
Mr. Carr, are the ballot supervisors ready to be sworn?
We are.
Thank you. Tellers and ballot counters, would you all please stand and raise your right hand? Does each of you swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties at Town Meeting this evening? Thank you all. Please be seated. On behalf of the meeting, I thank Mr. Fisher, Mr. Carr, and Ms. Rainey, and each and every one of the tellers and ballot counters for their willingness to volunteer in this important capacity this evening for us. All voters should have received a voting slip when they checked in. It's a different color every night. Tonight, it looks like this. Your voting slip is what identifies you as a registered voter in Concord entitled to vote here at the meeting. Please hang on to it. You might want to put your name on it, so if you drop it, you know which one is yours. We have some visitors to our meeting tonight, and we welcome you. Each visitor should have registered as a visitor in the cafeteria and received a badge, and they should be seated in the Visitors Section, which is over there in the far-right corner in the bleachers. We also have with us this evening Town Council Mina Macarius of Anderson and Krieger, and Town Council will be invited to address the meeting if we have a legal question. We have no preliminary motion this evening to fix the end time for this evening's session. We'll now turn our attention to the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, taking up Article 26. And please be sure, everybody, that you've silenced your mobile devices. I will ask all of the presenters on tonight's articles to note their pre-arranged presentation time. We'll count down on the clock in the corner of the screen that you can see up there. And in addition, the lights on the podium will flash amber when there are 30 seconds left and red when it's time to stop talking. When we open the floor for comments and questions, please approach a microphone, state your name and address. That's how we can figure out if you're a registered voter. And all the microphones are at the front of the hall. Microphone two is a con microphone; four is a pro; three and one are there for questions that don't have a particular orientation for or against. And microphone five is an accessible microphone at a height that will work for people who need it there, and that may be used by anybody for any purpose. Once again, tonight, please remember that we are a legislative body with a moderator presiding. Your questions and comments are made on behalf of the full assembly, and they should be addressed to the moderator, not to the speaker who may still be at the podium. Every speaker from the floor will have two minutes, and the clock on the screen will track your time, and please do keep track of your time. We happen to have a lot of people who'd like to have their two minutes, so we'll ask everyone to be respectful of that. One last word before we begin our deliberations tonight. As a community at Town Meeting, we want to balance full and fair discussion with reasonable and efficient use of our time. And while we want to be sure that the meeting is fully informed before it votes on an article, we do also want to avoid repetitive debate that doesn't shed much new light on the issues that are under consideration. And please do consider these community values and goals as you rise to speak, and also before you move the previous question to end debate. And we'll now take up Article 26, and I'll invite Ms. Kaufman to the podium. And I'll say to all the speakers at the podium this evening, I think that the microphone has been a bit pesky in terms of its proximity to the sound coming from your mouth, and therefore, some people in the back of the auditorium have intermittently been able to hear the speakers from the podium, so please be aware of that while you're speaking.
I'll be aware.
Excellent.
Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road, member of the Select Board and speaking for the Board.
Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
And before you start, do we have a second on the motion, which is on the screen? I see that we do. Thank you.
So before I begin to present Article 26, I thought it would be useful for those who may not have been here for last night's meeting. We had hoped to run through four of the articles, each of them related to affordable housing financing. We made it through Article 23, which was approved, and it allotted $500,000 from free cash for the purposes of affordable housing. Article 24 also was approved by the voters, and this will help us to establish a municipal housing trust that we can hold monies that are collected for affordable housing in the trust, which would be a town entity. Article 25 is the real estate transfer tax. That also was approved by the voters last night, and that is a fee that would be paid when housing or properties change hands in Concord. Article 26 is the last of the four articles, and that's the one I'm presenting this evening. So Article 26 requests authorization for special legislation permitting the town to add a surcharge on building permits, the proceeds of which would be used solely for affordable housing purposes. The Select Board and the Affordable Housing Funding Committee heard public comments at hearings, at meetings, at Select Board meetings, and some of these made a great deal of sense. Like the articles we heard last night, there are revisions to the article from that which was printed in the warrant. I hope you were able to pick up the amended language from the table when you checked in. I also have them up on the slides, and we'll go through them. So if you did not pick up the amended language, you can look at the original language in the FinCom Town Meeting Report on page 82, or on page 22 of the Town Warrant. But the slides on the screen will probably suffice. The first significant change is that rather than use square foot as the measure against which the building permit surcharge would be assessed, it uses construction value. This is consistent with how Concord's current building permit fee is determined. So rather than square feet, it is now... The proposed here is that we will use construction value of the project. And you can see the language on the screen. Note the pretty colors. The red on the screens are the language that has been removed, and the orange represents the new language. So Section 2 reinstates language that had been taken out, and what it basically does is it says that if and when this is approved, and we are raising funds for the purposes of affordable housing, those funds may be held either in the Concord Affordable Housing Trust, the new trust that was... I voted affirmatively last night, or with the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Section 4 defines the process that we will follow. And as we discussed last night, acceptance of the act by town, first at Town Meeting tonight, it will go to the Legislature for approval. When it comes back to Concord, it will come back to this body, a Town Meeting, for approval with a formal bylaw, and then it will go to a townwide ballot. The article proposes to impose a surcharge on building permits issued. The fee structure will be determined by the Select Board, following opportunities for community input and expert input as well. So over the course of the next year, I would assume that the Select Board... They're nodding yes. ...will be holding numerous conversations around town as we try to develop what is the best and most equitable surcharge to be used. But for purposes of this evening, I put up a hypothetical example. If the town were to assess a fee of just $5 per $1,000 worth of construction value, what would that look like? So the chart on the screen shows that Concord's standard building permit is assessed at $12 per thousand. If the town were to assess an additional fee of $5 per 100,000 additional fee, with the sole purpose that these extra funds would support affordable housing, a renovation that would cost $50,000 would cost the homeowner an additional $250. So what does that mean for the town? It seems like $250 would be... We'd have a long way to go to raise the funds that we're looking for to be able to assure that we have affordable housing throughout town. But if you look at the aggregate, in 2018, there were 981 building permits issued. The total construction value was $72,600-plus thousand dollars. So if we were to use that same hypothetical example of $5 per $100,000 of construction costs, in the aggregate, we would be able to have raised an additional $363,210 annually, which would go into the Concord Affordable Housing Trust or with the CHDC. But remember, if this article passes tonight, the Select Board will be holding public meetings regarding the rate that would be charged. Whatever that rate is, all the funds will be used solely for affordable housing. And this number that I've used for these demonstration purposes is just that. It's not a real number. It's a hypothetical amount that could be charged. There are many different ways you can look at a structure for how rates would be applied, and that will be the work of the citizens in the town to work out with the Select Board of what makes most sense. So before voting on this article, the Select Board spent considerable time discussing options to fund affordable housing. Actually, we've been discussing this for the six years that I've been on the Board, and specifically how a surcharge could fit into a portfolio of options to raise necessary funds. We weighed the impacts to homebuyers wanting to make improvements to their home, and we considered whether the surcharge would be a disincentive for a homeowner wishing to make modifications to an existing home. In the end, we found this to be a reasonable and appropriate mechanism to raise the capital we seek to meet the town's goal for affordable housing. The Select Board unanimously urges affirmative action on Article 26.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. The Finance Committee also recommends affirmative action on Article 26. Is that still... Nope, that's not the case anymore. Okay. So I'll just note that it does say in the Finance Committee Report that the Finance Committee recommends affirmative action on Article 26. So if that's not the case, you should straighten this out.
Tom Tarpe, 169 Heathbridge Road, Chair of the Finance Committee. Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee believes that we have not had a chance to review the currently moved article, and therefore, we are taking no position.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll now open the floor to questions and comments on Article 26. Microphone number four.
Stefan Bader, 7 River Street.
Mr. Bader.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle. The League believes that housing is a basic human need. The League supports housing at all income levels in Concord. There should be an adequate supply of housing available for people in a variety of ages, backgrounds, circumstances, and stages in life, because that enriches our community. Indeed, that is our Concord community. As Mike Lawson said last night, and as many others have said over the years, decades in fact, housing is one of the major challenges facing the town. Concord prides itself on being a vibrant town, one that enriches all of us. In order to continue as a vibrant town, we need a variety of housing sizes, including studio or in-law apartments, assisted living units, moderately sized family homes, both for rental and purchase, and yes, some large houses too, to accommodate the variety of housing needs of the residents' household sizes as they change, as they go through their life stages. The League considered all four of these affordable housing proposals and voted unanimously to support them, and in particular, Article 26 is part of the package. We need a variety of funding sources if we are to create an ongoing supply of funding that's reliable and can be planned with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Ruth Lauer, Kyse Road.
Ms. Lauer.
Thank you. I have great support for the article, and I have two questions of clarification. You mentioned, as one of the changes... I'm sorry, Ms. Kaufman mentioned as a question of clarification in Section 2 where the funds could be held, either the trust or the CHDC, and I'm wondering, who gets to choose? And secondly, the article itself speaks of permits, but the presentation spoke to homeowners. So I'm wondering if this is only going to be residential owner-occupied permits, or could it be investment residential, or could it be all permits? Thank you.
We'll hear from Town Council on that.
On the first question, who gets to decide? The answer is Town Meeting, because this particular surcharge would need to come back for a bylaw to implement it, and that bylaw could decide where the funding goes. On the second question, this would apply to all building permits that meet the requirements for the construction, and again, the details of that can be clarified in the bylaw.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
George Corret, 148 Peter Spring Road.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As the Town Council just spoke, the devil is in the details. So I suspect the spirit of this article is like the previous article of the transfer fee, kind of a two-edged sword. Raising money for affordable housing, I'm all for that, can't argue against it. But these sort of things also, due to their exemption structures that tend to be put into place, give an unfair advantage to the so-called nonprofits organizations. There's about 4,000 of these nonprofits operating in Massachusetts that do various forms of housing development, at least according to their association website. That seems like a radically large number to me. But the nonprofits can have unfair advantage in both the transfer fee aspect and in the building permit aspect. And so I think people have to think about the people that are... When you're putting forth these sort of things, they're a two-edged sword, and you have to think about, do we really want to be giving advantage to... unfair advantage to one group over another? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't actually see an exemption for nonprofits in this proposed legislation. Is that correct?
It's correct. It's not in it, but the details have to be worked out.
Okay. Thank you. Microphone number one.
David Clark, 329 Heathbridge Road.
Mr. Clark.
This is a simple question of clarification related to what Ms. Lauer asked. As I heard the speaker, it appeared that they described Section 2 as written in the warrant, but what I saw on the screen had some of the text struck out. It looked to me as if it struck out the lines that mentioned the Concord Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Could we go back and just look at Section 2 for a minute?
Certainly. You saw the same language struck out and put back in. That was what you saw.
Well, I'm sorry. Where is it put back in? Are you saying the screen is out of date?
No. Article 26 is moved with the language deleted from Section 2 in the handout reinserted. So it had been struck from what you had in the handout, and we have reinserted it. So it goes back to the original, where we will have two options for where funds will go, either to the Concord Affordable Housing Trust or to the CHDC. So that original language is...
So the text on the screen does not mention the CHDC, because it's redlined in the screen, right?
It's reinserted. In the white type, right below, it's there.
It's reinserted in Section 2. What had been struck... How do I point that out?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's also in the motion.
That's fine.
The motion also shows that it's been reinstated.
What you're saying is the red line on that slide is overridden by the text at the bottom that says Article 26 is moved with the deleted language put back.
Correct.
I find that confusing, but I take your point.
I agree. But I'm glad we figured that out.
Thank you. Is that a person at microphone five over there? Microphone five.
Mark Martinez, 66 Alfred Circle.
Mr. Martinez.
Thanks for all who've worked on this, and like a number of speakers mentioned last night, tonight, I don't think there's anyone who's against affordable housing funding, and we're all struggling to figure out the right way. And in sort of the combination of the articles, my takeaway was giving the town speed to move on opportunistic purchases, avoiding the leverage of a possible 40B situation, and hopefully, being able to provide affordable housing to town employees and other people who we would prefer be given that opportunity. One of the things I don't understand is that the model was 10 houses a year, $500,000 a house for $5 million. Prior to the $600,000 floor, this would raise... The tax would raise... The transfer tax would raise 2.7 to $3 million. With the $600,000 floor, permis Kaufman, now the transfer tax is going to raise $1.1 million based on the last five years of housing sales. We just learned that the surcharge of the building permit, which will be a 40% increase from $12 to $17, will generate approximately, call it, $400,000. So we're at $1,500,000 if this were to pass. We are $3.5 million short, which would be, I think, quick math, 70% of our $5 million goal. So I guess from my perspective, it just seems premature to talk about the first piece, that is raising money, but not talking about the second piece, and that is how we're going to plan to execute our goal. I'm not familiar with this staffing, but are we going to have to hire staff to renovate and possibly build homes? Secondly, the infrastructure, we have three committees...
Mr. Martinez, you're just about out of time.
I'll be done in 15 seconds. We have the Housing Foundation, the Housing Development Corporation, and now a housing fund. I'm hoping the staffing can be consolidated, and when this comes back for town vote, hopefully someone will talk about a plan on how we can practically execute our goal of $5 million a year.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Could I get those questions answered? Or were they not specific as to what the questions were?
I thought you were hoping for the answers the next time it came back, but sure. Do you want to talk about what the plan... Todd, would you like to talk about what the plan is?
So specifically, I'd like someone to address the $3.5 million shortfall.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd Benjamin Sudbury Road, Chair of the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, speaking on behalf of the committee. I think one thing that's important to mention for Ms. Kaufman's presentation is that the rate that she mentioned was a hypothetical rate, so that could bode for an increase in the fee that you're... In the total fee that you're talking about. You mentioned that, as it stands now, there'd be $1.5 million. That's based on the $5 that she mentioned in the presentation.
Now, just to be clear, the $5 translates into $363,000.
Yes.
1.1 is coming from the transfer tax. So I'm just saying that if you even were to increase... Say you were to double it... So I'm just saying that if you even were to increase, say you were to double it, we're only talking about increasing it, say, from four to eight, and we're still $3 million short of our $5 million.
Mr. Martinez, I want you to put that microphone down. I think we have your point. We've got a big shortfall from what we were told the original goal was, and you want to know what the plan is, how the plan will be readjusted, or what the plan is to make up the shortfall. That's what you want to know. Mr. Benjamin, can you help us with that?
Sure. So there are a couple of things. First of all, the fee may, may change, as Alice mentioned. The other thing that is important to, to keep in mind is that there are several different ways that we can increase affordable homes in our community. So one of those ways is by purchasing and, and remediating single-family homes. That's the most expensive way. And if we were to do that for all of this, then we would need $500,000 per home. And an excellent example of this is the, is the Jerome property, which we may hear about later on tonight. There was recently a feasibility study done for this property, and this is a two-bedroom, 1,100 square foot house, and the development costs of that are projected to be $300,000 just for that. That does not include the land. So that's an example of, if we do this by single-family homes, how the cost goes up. If we do this by leveraging state funds or by federal funds, then we can have greater density in, in terms of some of these solutions, and therefore, we would have less burden on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund resources. So that would be another way that we could kind of leverage the money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help meet the goal as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Christian Fisher, 96 Wilson Road.
Mr. Fisher.
I am a landlord and, to some extent, an affordable housing developer. I am developing some affordable housing units in another town, and I'm fortunate to have some of that town's money helping that development. However, I think heaping another tax on, for affordable housing is not really the way to go. While I think this measure only mildly discourages building by adding a tax on top of the building fee, it wouldn't, it does seem strangely contradictory to building when what we're trying to do is encourage affordable building. There seems to be a contradiction there. I think also, after the last night, you know, perhaps the Affordable Housing Trust will be flushed with cash, you know, between the $500,000 of free cash and the transfer tax that was voted. An affordable house in this town would be approximately $250,000, and it's hard to imagine how putting this additional tax on the building permit fees would help us provide $250,000 As an affordable housing developer in another town, and I find the principal challenge of developing affordable housing, money is an issue, certainly, but more than money, perhaps, is zoning. And noticeably missing from this Town Meeting is any change in the zoning. The minimum zoning size for a lot in this town is 10,000 square feet. I think any piece of land in this town that would be sold, 10,000 square feet of buildable lot, would be 300,000 and up, already exceeding the cost of an affordable house. I think what needs to be looked at is zoning, and perhaps somebody can address that later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Your time is up. And I don't know if you were here last night, but we did hear last night from the Planning Board that they are very much aware of the need to add zoning into this mix, and they expect to be coming with some proposals next year. Microphone number one.
Cynthia Rainey, 80 Hunters Ridge Road.
Ms. Rainey.
I was wondering if somebody could define the term "construction value."
Okay.
Since that's a pretty big change in the motion.
The term "construction value" is the value of the project that's being added onto a house. It's the same, this is the same method that is used currently for the Concord, regular Concord building permit. So it looks at, what is the cost of the construction project, and the fee that the town charges is $12 per $1,000 of value of that project.
Okay, so it wouldn't be any extra work for town staff?
No, it's exactly the same. It's piggybacking on the building permit structure right now.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number four.
Charles Phillips, 65 Fairhaven Road.
Mr. Phillips.
This proposal, this proposed article is very similar to the article that we brought back in 2017, surcharge on building permits. It has now gone to construction value, and it's broader. And I think that there was, was a lot of support then, back in 2017, for such a measure. So I hope that the Town Meeting will vote yes on this, which is broader and also more amenable to the, the public input as to the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Lee Smith, 1836 Main Street.
Mr. Smith.
Madam Moderator, I'm the co-chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation, or CHDC, and I'm speaking on its behalf. CHDC is a nonprofit housing corporation established in 2006 at the request of the Select Board, or charged with implementing alternatives for providing affordable housing in Concord. CHD supports Article 26 as a sustainable source of funding for affordable housing purposes. CHDC has limited resources and presently does not have enough money on hand to be able to act to pursue opportunities for additional affordable housing. With access to the funds that the building permit fee surcharge would generate, CHDC could act quickly as opportunities arise and create additional affordable housing units, including family housing and units for first-time homebuyers, as examples. Without these funds, CHDC's ability to pursue property acquisition or redevelopment is severely limited, and as the case has been over the years, chances to save or create affordable units are lost. CHDC asks for your support and to vote yes on Article 26. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Thank you. My name is Donna Corrett from 148 Peter Spring Road.
Ms. Corret.
Thank you. I am concerned about this surcharge. I'm concerned about the effect on seniors and elders. I see taxes going up and up. You know, we're paying for the new Minuteman, the new middle school probably, and, and there are many proposals at the State House to raise taxes. I hear the federal, federal taxes are, are going up for homeowners, and is it too early to suggest an amendment?
If you wish to suggest an amendment, you need to have it on a piece of paper and three copies and get it to us so we can review it with Town Council. I can review it to decide if it's in scope, and we can get it typed up by the IT people so it can go on the screen. And if you'd like to work with Dr. Curtin here to help you do that amendment, you can do it right now. Okay, all right. Microphone number one.
Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
Yes, I'm, I have questions about the, about the layers here of, of costs. I heard an authoritative person who's a developer say that, in effect, the, the fee that we just, the transfer fee that we just voted on is most likely going to be paid by the, the buyer of a house that is, that is sold for, for renovation. So the, then, the, when, if a house is sold that needs renovation, then the buyer then has to pay this extra fee on top of that. And in the end, though, we're only raising insufficient funds to meet the total goal. So what I'm wondering is, in terms of keeping things simple in the town for everybody, since this is not going to raise enough money to be truly meaningful, I'm wondering whether it would make sense, I haven't made up my mind yet, to not do this, but then to rely upon use of free cash in the future to fund the gap that was pointed out by a previous speaker, since that, the amount of free cash typically that would be available would probably be three times the amount that would be raised by this amount of money. So we're adding a lot of complexity to our processes, more accounting. I'm familiar with the accounting system in the town of Needham, which couldn't handle this, and I'm wondering why, why we need to add more complexity to the whole situation here when it's not going to raise very much money. Thank you.
Mr. Hines, is that a question you'd like an answer to, or are you posing it as a hypothetical for us to think about?
I'm asking people to consider the fairness, and I haven't decided myself, of having multiple fees being applied to the buyer of a property. For example, I just want...
That's okay. I have your point. Thank you very much. Let's see. Microphone number four.
David Allen, excuse me, Madam Moderator, David Allen, 316 Heath's Bridge Road.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Appreciating the conversation here. One way to think about layers is actually portfolio, which was the idea here in the first place. Instead of looking for a single or very limited set of sources for funds, we look in several different places. My own sense is that's a very sound idea. As to whether or not we're flush, it's already been pointed out that, in fact, to meet our goals, we're going to be looking for significantly more money. And for goodness sake, it's surely time to get started. We have this extraordinary opportunity finally this year, after many years of work. We've heard the select person say she has worked on this for the last half dozen years with the Select Board. It looks like we have a terrific opportunity tonight. Hopefully, we'll take it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I want to point out that we have been working on Article 26 for half an hour now, and we still have a lot of business to get through, so I just want everybody to be mindful of that as we proceed. Microphone number three.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, a member of the Finance Committee, but speaking on my own behalf.
Mr. Banfield.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In this article, we now have money that will be raised through a fee structure, and there are two alternative places where the money could flow. It could flow either to the housing trust that was established in Article 24, or it could flow to the Concord Housing Development Corporation because of the reinserted language. In Article 23, we indicated that the money taken from free cash would be under the direction of this town manager with approval from the Select Board, and in Article 25, the funds, I believe, will flow into the, into the newly established, once it comes back from the legislature, Housing Trust Fund, under a bylaw. So my question is, why have we reinserted the Housing Development Corporation here, and under what mechanism would we choose? Where these funds go? They are automatically assessed through a building permit fee, they flow into the Treasury, and then someone, somewhere, has to decide where they go. And how would we decide? So that's not clear to me. And the other piece of that is, it would be very obvious that if it, if everything vectored into one place where money went, which would be the trust fund, that then that, those trustees could take applications from the Housing Development Corporation or any other developer who is building maybe a development of multiple units and might want to put up one unit and get some funding from the town to help him with that or her. So it's just not clear to me why this language was reinserted, and I would like to know why we put it back in after printing a handout that did not have it.
Thank you. Ms. Kaufman, you are, okay, very quick. Mr. Macarius, wait.
The rationale for putting that language back in is because this is going to the legislator first, and to provide the town with flexibility in the legislation that is ultimately going to be there for, until amended by the legislator, again, if the legislator passes this, to have either option. By bylaw, subject to this Town Meeting's approval at a later year, the, you can pick one or the other, so that, however, let's say in the future, CHDC ceases to exist, but the Affordable Trust is there, you wouldn't have to go back to the legislator to change it again, or vice versa. If the trust ceases to exist or the funds are depleted, you would only need to change a bylaw. Either way, Town Meeting would dictate that, but you wouldn't need to go back to the State House.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Michael Coogan, 15 Whittmore Street. I call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Coogan. That, well... So we're just considering whether, in fairness, the person who raised the desire to amend a few minutes ago and has been working on her amendment these last few minutes should have a moment more to finish her amendment. And let's see, who moved the question there? Would you mind hanging on to that for just a moment, and we'll see what the amendment Heather, if you have that on paper, I could read it and we could get started while we're trying to tape it, type it. So the amendment that is going to be proposed is to exempt homeowners who are over the age of 62 from having to pay this fee. Town Council is currently working on figuring out where you stick that in this proposed legislation in order for that to work. But that is the substance of the amendment, and Town Council will help us figure out exactly where that goes. And Ms. Corret, would you like to speak to your amendment? Ms. Corret, would you like to speak to your amendment? We'll go to a microphone and make your motion.
Okay, so this, I haven't done this before, so you're going to have to help me out.
Understand. Go right ahead. So you're making a motion to amend?
Yes.
And your motion, as I understand it, is to exempt homeowners who are over the age...
Homeowners and property owners.
Property owners who are over the age of 62 from payment of the fee?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to explain why you want to make that amendment?
Yes. When I was at the COA luncheon today, I was discussing the impact of the measures of this week on, on seniors and elders. Some seniors do not drive at night, and they, you know, they don't come out for these meetings. But there was concern, you know, once people are no longer working and they're on a fixed income, things look very different, you know? Medical bills may be racking up, and I think it would be compassionate not to assess the fee on seniors and elders.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second for this motion? I see that there is. Okay. We'll now open the floor to discuss the proposed amendment. I'm not sure we're going to see exactly wherein the statute it goes, but I think we can certainly trust the Town Council is figuring out the appropriate place. We understand the substance. So anyone like, microphone number one, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, David Clark, 329 Heath's Bridge Road.
Mr. Clark.
And again, I'm asking sort of a procedural question. The problem with an amendment like this being drafted at the last minute is, I appreciate its sentiment, but again, the details have to be right. And so I'm scratching my head, saying, what happens if a house is held jointly and one person is 55 and the other is 70? I noticed in the legislation, in the motion that it says, whether the town will authorize the Select Board to petition the court for special legislation substantially in the form below, and it would be helpful if Town Council could say whether that gives us sufficient scope to work out some of the details that it would take to make this amendment function in the complicated case of 12 property owners, a piece of property owned by 12 people, and all those kinds of things that you actually have to work out to get it right, because I'm nervous about putting in an amendment at the last minute that could conceivably have gnarly bits in it later.
Thank you. We'll hear from Town Council.
Thank you. So there's sort of two answers to that question. First, the bylaw... First, the bylaw that is required to effectuate this is where you can work a lot of those details out and is the appropriate place to. The language and substantially the form is really more limited than that. It's closer to, by way of example, the action, any other relation there, to sort of a scope question you have in town meeting articles, so that the legislator can work out linguistic issues or issues that they're not comfortable with, and that that can still be within it. I don't think that this kind of amendment, a full exemption, would be something the legislator can do on its own, or at least with the town's blessing. But the bylaw could certainly allow for that and may be the more appropriate place to, because you have more, you can add more details if you need to.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Judy Terry, 368 College Road. It's my understanding that these fees are charged only when there are building permits being issued, and I question how many seniors who are having financial difficulties would be applying for building permits. I think that some of our seniors are among the wealthiest people in town and might be getting permits for very luxurious additions or homes.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hugh McCroy, Lee Drive, Concord.
Yes, sir.
So, well, I think this amendment is well-intentioned. I think it's hastily arranged. I think the intent, if I'm not misrepresenting the proponent of the amendment, is that it's based on income. If you're, in theory, if you're over 62, that you might be low on income. I think if there should be amendment, it should be based on an income level, not on age. So I think it's not a good amendment. I will be voting for the main article, but not for this amendment. I think it's hastily arranged and not a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone number three.
Laura Levann, Nimrod Drive. I'm one of the seniors that might qualify for this, and one of the things that I'm very interested in doing is being able to stay in my home and perhaps remodel it so that I can stay there as an elder. And I'm not a rich person that's going to be putting on a big addition, but I might be making my bathroom handicapped accessible, making my home handicapped accessible. So just listening to what I've heard about this, it sounds interesting to me. I do think it is hastily arranged, so it has to be correct, but it sounds like a good idea to me.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Tiedemann, 656 Barrett's Mill Road.
Yes, sir.
I have the suspicion here that we may seem to have a lot of developers that all of a sudden become over 65 to avoid this, and that is, unless somebody puts me another way, that is my concern with this.
Thank you very much. One more person at a microphone. Microphone number three.
Just want to clarify the text. Oh, sorry. Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street.
Yes.
Just want to clarify. I thought I heard her at the microphone say homeowners or property owners. Can I just clarify whether it's the text on the screen or... Because I agree with what the other gentleman said. I think property owners includes probably developers who are all going to be 65.
So Ms. Corret, where are you? Which way did you want to move this? Where did you go? Ah, there you are. Stay closer to a microphone until we're done with your amendment. So the question, Ms. Corret, is, is it your intent to have homeowners or property owners, or homeowners and property owners?
The way it reads there, homeowners is...
That's fine.
Probably a better fit, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That clarification is made. Seeing no one else at him, oh, very sorry. Microphone number five. Thank you.
I'm Bernie Jenkins, 32 Stafford Charline.
Ms. Jenkins.
And for 14 years, I was the Director of the Council on Aging, and I'm definitely over 62. But one of the main issues of people coming to the Council on Aging was, what am I going to do because I can't afford all of the things? And I totally support, I wish it were an amendment, but I guess what I want to say to the people that are processing and making this, the original motion, work is that you really consider the issue of people over 62 and that they have a need and they don't know how to access the help that they need.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Abraham Fisher, 400 Hayward Mill Road.
Mr. Fisher.
At the beginning of the presentation of the original article, we saw a hypothetical of what this might cost, given certain assumptions about rates, et cetera. I'm wondering what, and based on, it's what, per $1,000 of construction value, correct? Do we have any sense of what the average permit over the last however many years has been in terms of $1,000 of construction value? What would the, how much are we actually talking about for the average project?
Let's see, Marcia's not... Who would know that? Elizabeth, Marcia? No, you don't know. Okay. In terms of an average, the planning department has no idea. I'm seeing shaking heads on the Affordable Housing Funding Committee. Do you know the answer?
Brian Folds, 33...
Wait. Let's turn on microphone number two.
Brian Folds, 33 Riverdale.
Mr. Folds.
There was a slide earlier that showed the number of permits pulled and the total collected.
Yes, but that doesn't give us, well, I suppose you could divide it, and that would give you the average. Yes, that's true. Would you like us to pull that up?
That would be, that would be terrific. Hello? That would be terrific.
Okay. There it is.
All right. So total construction value of $72 million, roughly $1,000, so an average of roughly $72,000 plus or minus, doing real quick and easy math here. The point being, I'm not sure how much a marginal change in the cost of the permit is going to make to any particular project. We're not talking about, I hope we're not talking about changing the permit price drastically to raise money for affordable housing, in which case this amendment doesn't really do anything. You know, if we're going to, in the example given, it was going to add $250 to the permit cost for a project that was going to cost, I think, what, $50,000? That's a tiny, tiny change. What protection are we actually providing with this amendment?
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Topher Buck, 31 Damon Street.
Mr. Beck.
Can someone remind me if, I probably should know this, but I don't, does the town have a program that reduces property taxes for elderly residents who are...
Yes, it does. The town has a senior means-tested property tax relief program that folks can apply to through the assessor's office.
So it occurs to me that that is quite likely the same demographic that would be most, at whom perhaps this amendment is targeted. I think, like Mr. McCroy, I support the idea of means-testing in this fashion. I'm not particularly taken with this amendment itself. It seems, so in effect, I guess I'm suggesting that there may be better mechanisms to do this, and if I understood Mr. Macarius, it sounded to me as if many of those details will necessarily be, need to be worked out in the process. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, I'm suggesting that we vote down this amendment, pass the article, and move on.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Paul Jameson, 419 College Road.
Mr. Jameson.
I'd like to call the question on the amendment.
Okay. You know, I think you're the last, oh, wait, there's only one more speaker. Yeah, sorry, Merrill. Okay. So this, is there a second for the motion to call the question? Okay. This is a two-thirds vote, not debatable. All those in favor of calling the question? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Okay. The motion to call the question passes. The amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment that you see on the screen to exempt folks over the age of 62 from paying the surcharge. Thank you very much. All those opposed? Okay. The amendment fails. We'll now return to the main article. Can we put the main article slide back up? Thank you very much. And I believe we had a motion to call this question pending. Okay. Do we have a second for that one? Yes, we do. Okay. All those in favor of calling the question on the main article? Thank you. All those opposed? That carries. We'll now go on to vote on Article 26. And this is to authorize the Select Board to seek special legislation for a building permit surcharge for affordable housing, which we'll come back to town meeting and then go to the polls. Okay. All right. So all those in favor of Article 26, please raise your paper voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? And I say, I see that Article 26 passes by well more than a majority, and I do so declare. Okay. We will now move on to Article 27.
Are we going back to...
Oh, sorry. We will not go to Article 27. We will go to Article 11. Sorry, I almost gave heart failure to the superintendent. She looks okay. The motion for the Concord Public Schools budget was on the screen. Can we have that back?
We're testing the clicker ineffectively.
There we go. Okay. Do we have a second for the motion? I see that we do. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Lori Hunter, Superintendent of Schools. We're glad tonight to be here to talk with you about our operating budgets and a couple of capital articles, first for the Concord Public Schools and then for the region. Article 11 focuses on the operating budget for the Concord Public Schools, which are the pre-K through eighth-grade schools. So for FY '20, we've proposed a budget that's been voted and approved by the school committee This year, we took on a very different budgeting process under the direction of our new Director of Finance and Operations, Jared Stanton. We took on a zero-based budgeting approach, which essentially means we started both budgets from scratch, and that included salaries and all the other cost areas, so that we were able to document and justify every request we were bringing forward. Among those areas, as I mentioned, were salaries, so we've now itemized and documented every position and aligned it into its correct line item. We reviewed our legal costs and have switched legal firms to change from an hourly cost of $1,100 to $200, and we continue to review our contracted services. An ongoing process is around our special education services. We're looking closely at in-district and out-of-district services. We've had outside consultants come in and do extensive reviews, providing us great feedback, and we are currently looking to create more in-house programs to keep students within our school district. We believe that's better for the kids who get to stay. It's better for the regular education kids, and it ultimately is more cost-effective. We've itemized every supply and material line. The principals have had to justify every request that they made to us. We vetted those and trimmed them down and supported the ones that we felt were worthy. And we continue to reorganize our personnel structures, both at the central office, I'm down three, over three FTEs at Ripley, as well as throughout the district, trying to be sure that we do better with less or provide level service for a more cost-effective means. So what that led to, our budget drivers for this year coming into FY '20, you'll see a range of numbers here, including contracted services, which includes special education and facilities work. Highlights here, I'll also make, the teachers' contract this year allowed for a double step to the Concord Teachers Association staff so that they are on parity with the high school teachers. So that was a significant driver for us this year. And then we reinstated some supplies we had cut last year to get to our number, and we continue to review the needs of the schools, which we will loop back to the middle school when we get to the capital needs again tonight. Cost savings, this is very conservative, that we expect to save more than the $15,000 we identified in legal. We've been able to make some reductions across the board in different salary areas. We've also made line item adjustments, which accounts for a good amount of this money. We are already realizing through our zero-based approach in special education, when we itemize each of the placements and allow for some contingency, we were able to come in less than what we had in the past. We did, we are trying to get creative. This is an example of that. So this past year, we offered two phases of a retirement and separation plan for staff who had 15 years of longevity with us. You can see the numbers here. We had eight and a half teachers, 8.5 positions, plus another nine over the two phases, ultimately resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings over time. So for the CPS budget, we are coming in with an increase of 1.143268, which is a total operational increase of 2.99%. We're proud of that number. That's a result of our efforts to start from scratch and build again. It's a level service budget, so we were able to do that while providing the services we expect and believe we want to provide for our students. We've had great dialogue with the Finance Committee all through this budget process, so we're excited to come here tonight and say that we've come to agreement and have met the guideline. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 11, as well as the Finance Committee. We'll open the floor now for questions and comments. Microphone number one.
Yes. Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
I regret I didn't go to school committee meetings where the budget line items were discussed, but I saw, am I correct that I saw a reduction in payments to tutors of $700,000 plus? And I'm wondering what the consequences are for students who have been requiring tutors? Will that mean that private tutors will need to be hired at the family's expense that weren't before? And is that truly level service for kids receiving tutoring? Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. A lot of that work is relooking at how we're operating and how we're budgeting. A lot of the line item cleanup we did, we had tutors scattered throughout the budget rather than consolidated in one place, and as we gathered that information and then identified the actual number of staff that we had. So that's not really reflective of that personnel cut, per se. It's a matter of budgeting and realigning and making sure we account for everyone and where they are. So to your point, students are still receiving the services that they need.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Ann Hayden, 342 Sudbury Road. I would just like to say I'm probably speaking for town meeting and thanking you for looking at the legal services budget and responding to what we've been asking you all to do for a number of years in reducing the cost, and I'm sure you're going to get a lot of benefit out of those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks to me like we're ready for a vote on Article 11, the Concord Public... There's a question at number five. Okay. Thank you very much. Number five.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Moira Walsh, 169 Thoreau Street. My question is regarding the teachers. What was the average salary of the teachers at 15 years leaving Concord, and what incentive was offered to them to leave?
Great question. Our average salary at 15 years, they're at the top of the scale, depending on their level of education. So we were using an average of $115,000. The incentive was $40,000 over three years, so we've divided that out, and we've committed to replacing those teachers at a master's degree and moderate experience for $75,000. So ultimately, we are saving considerable funds over time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks now like we're ready for a vote on Article 11, the Concord Public Schools budget. Looks now like we're ready for a vote on Article 11, the Concord Public Schools budget. We need a majority vote for this. All those in favor, please raise your paper voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? That is a vote in favor, near unanimous, if not unanimous, and I do so declare. Thank you. And we'll move on now to Article 12.
Thank you. Article 12 is the Concord Public Schools capital project budget. This is a piece of the town manager's capital request. $900,000 has been allocated to support the needs of the schools, so I want to outline that for you tonight as to where we propose that those funds be spent. We are in desperate need of a telephone system in the preschool through 8th grade buildings. We are finding very unreliable service, highly dependent on the weather, unfortunately. So we're eager to replace a very outdated system and be sure that we have up-to-date, reliable telephone service, so that's $200,000 of the request. We are always reviewing our security options and systems, given the times and challenges of 2019. So we are looking to upgrade security cameras at Thoreau and Willard. We did a little bit at Alcott a year ago. We, now, then, the rest we are proposing, you know, you were so gracious in supporting the middle school forward-thinking project the other night. We are still concerned about the students who are only going to experience Sanborn and Peabody, because they're there now, and any new project they will not benefit from. So we thought that putting some funds into those schools now would benefit the students who are there from now until there should be a new school, try to make that the best possible learning environment. We always have to carry contingency funds for those two buildings, because we never know what's going to go wrong, so that's the first $100,000. We are reconfiguring Peabody and Sanborn this fall to try to do better with what we have. Peabody will open with all of the 6th grade class in September, and Sanborn will open with all of the 7th and 8th graders, which is different than what we've done for a very long time, with a mix of 6, 7, and 8 in each school. In order to accommodate that plan, we had some work to do at Sanborn, so we have adequate science labs and adequate art room space with a kiln, so we're making those upgrades to make sure that the programming remains the same, not dependent on what building students are in. Finally, we just want to do some facelifting. There's some really dated, ugly, gross carpet throughout both schools, so we would like to replace that and make that feel fresh. We do have some abatement work to do, which is a good bulk of the cost that's there in order to do the carpet replacement. And then we'd also like to paint and just freshen it up, clean it up, and make it feel like a really welcoming learning environment. So that's how we're proposing use of the $900,000 this year, and we would welcome any questions.
Is there a second for the motion under Article 12? I see that there is, and I will note that both the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommend affirmative action on Article 12. Questions or comments from the floor? Is that someone approaching a microphone? No. Okay. Seeing none, it looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 12? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Okay, well, that carries by a large majority, and I do so declare. Okay, that takes us to Article 13.
Yes, thank you. Article 13 is a request that the schools might benefit from the rental fees to the Concord Public Schools when the space is used by outside groups. Currently, when we rent a gym at any of the elementary schools or the middle schools, the renting group will pay for custodial fees, but the actual charge to use the site is now going to the town's general fund. So this motion is meant to be a request that the fees that come in through those rentals could be created into a revolving account for the schools, that we could then use to update and maintain those common spaces, like gym floors and things like that. So the request tonight is that fees used from outside organizations would go directly to the Concord Public Schools in a revolving fund. Because it's a revolving fund, the fees could roll over and accumulate. A little bit of fact to go with that, average annual rental right now for the use of the facilities is $15,000. Like I said, custodial costs are paid directly by the outside group. This would allow us to make use of those fees to maintain those spaces, and we would ask that instead of it going to the general fund, it comes to the schools for discretion of the school committee.
Thank you very much. I will ask for a second on the motion under Article 13. I see that we have one. I'll note that both the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommend affirmative action. And before we take comments and questions from the floor on this one, I just want to go back and amend my declaration of the vote on Article 12. Counsel points out to me that we do need a two-thirds vote, and there certainly was a two-thirds vote, so I just need to be clear that that's what I saw. So we did have a two-thirds vote on Article 12. All right, questions and comments on Article 13? Microphone number one.
Brian Folds, 33 Riverdale. This concept is a problem in many departments in town, where they have facilities, they, for example, CSECT many years ago was doing many programs where they were using the sort of trust funds to create opportunities for rebates and other incentives that were captured, but the fund was constantly being depleted because any value that was derived from that was going to the general fund. Is doing this really setting a precedent for every department in town to create their own, to get their own money back, and then thus circumventing the general fund?
I'm going to let Carrie answer that.
We'll hear from the town treasurer.
So for the most part, rental of municipal property is not something that can be segregated from the general fund, only in certain specific purposes that are outlined under Mass General Law, like this for the school property. The town does have a couple of rental properties, farm properties, and there is legislation or there is a state law that allows for the segregation of the rental income from those properties to be put in a revolving fund. But in general, it's not allowed for most departments.
So the answer is that it's only related to renting?
Well, it's only to, but either long-term, in the case of the schools, short-term rental. And what I'm mentioning is, for other municipal properties, long-term rental is allowed to go into a revolving fund.
So it was the precedent question, because other, once this goes through, other departments in town, other examples will come up at next year's town meeting for how they want to not have their savings or their value go into the general fund. Is this, does the state law fit only with the rental from the school or rental from town-owned properties? Or does it, could it be manipulated for other purposes?
I don't believe that it could be manipulated. The exclusion for the schools has been longstanding. The exclusion for rental of certain town properties, such as the farm properties, has only come into existence since 2017, and it's very specific to those types of properties. I don't believe that there are any other municipal properties, buildings, that could be rented and the monies could be put into revolving funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that someone at a microphone there? Microphone number two.
Well, I understand, oh, sorry.
Name and address.
Sharon Jones, 8 Eaton Street.
Ms. Jones.
Madam Moderator. Well, I understand the motion's intent, that, of course, they want to support the schools. I believe the schools appropriately like to support teachers and supplies, but they also need the buildings, and the buildings are the property of the town, supported by the town. The capital is provided by the town, and it's appropriate that those facilities be maintained by the town and that the monies raised by the use of them go back to the town, that the town, a big part of what we do is the schools, but that's not the only thing that we need to do as a town. So I am voting against this.
Thank you.
I urge you to vote against this particular motion.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Tim Rose, 97 Bartlett Hill Road.
Mr. Rose.
Could I just ask how much money we're actually talking about per year?
Approximately $15,000.
Total.
Total.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Linda Miller, 300 Main Street.
Ms. Miller.
I only have a question about the transparency of this funding, and will it be reported in your financial results annually?
Yes, right now, you'll see, if you were to look at the regional budget, we have multiple revolving accounts, because they're already established, so we report all those out there in the budget books. We would start to do the same with the Concord side of that as well. We don't have any other revolving accounts currently, so it would be the first.
Thank you. Microphone number three. Your timing is impeccable.
Thank you. Christian Kruger, 85 Alcott Road.
Mr. Kruger.
I'm curious what the current process for either soliciting people to come rent the facilities are, or how they come to you, and if, now that it's going to be part of the school's funding, anyone in particular will be trying to find renters, so that way they can increase the funds that the schools have to go and do things.
Great questions. The webpage is a portal where people can both find information, I know this is cutting out, and I'm sorry for that, find information on our policies and processes, as well as actually online, put in a request to use the facilities. We have not been recruiting. We get approached often for use of the schools, and so we follow the letter of the policy, which first says it has to not be needed by a school purpose, and then making sure that the groups meet the criteria of what's outlined in the school committee policy.
Thank you very much.
Microphone number three.
Ruth Lauer, 100 Cass Road.
Ms. Lauer.
Another point of fussiness, I guess. Are we talking about the rental of the building, or the field, or a subset, like just a gym? I can't imagine that the fields are rented for the summer to camps for $15,000, plus all of the other rentals that happen during the year.
Most of this, and because this is the Concord side, which is just the elementaries and the middle school, those aren't full-sized gymnasiums, but that would be the bulk of where the revenue is coming from. The rest of the use might be some field usage, but beyond that, there's very little request to use other parts of the schools.
I'm just stuck with how much money a soccer camp is going to make from charging tuition for summer. And the school system currently only accrues $15,000, or even less, because other folks, very few other folks are also renting.
Right, again, the.
Does this apply to the high school?
This does not, no, this is a CPS article. We do have more activity on the high school fields.
Granted, granted.
Which is a different discussion. We already have a revolving account established there. Because this is the Concord Public School, we need to establish the revolving account through town meeting. The region can do it within its own purview.
Sure, sure.
So there is more money coming into the high school, if that helps answer your question.
There's more money at CPS. Yes, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Microphone number one.
Cynthia Rady, 80 Hunters Ridge Road.
Ms. Rady.
So I just wanted to get a clarification on who maintains the fields near the schools. Is it the town or the schools, or is it joint effort?
A little bit of both, depending on which fields we're talking about. Each school's a little bit different. At Ripley, the town does it. At Sanborn, we're doing it. We work very jointly together with them.
So, again, as Ms. Lauer pointed out, it seems that if a camp rents the field, that, you know, we might want to look at that in the future and see how we can apportion the money fairly between the town and the schools.
Sure.
That's all. Thank you.
Microphone number five.
Yeah, hi. Mark Hanson, 340 Holdenwood Road.
Mr. Hanson.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, around Ripley School, there's a lot of agricultural land, and I think, is that owned by the school or the town?
Well, owned by the town. Whoever wants to correct me if I say this wrong, I'll look at Chris. Owned by the town.
Okay, so the rental fees paid by the farmer go to the town general fund?
Yes, oh, definitely, yes.
Okay, then, the second question I've got really relates back to something Brian said, which is, a few years ago, we did, spent a lot of money and raised a lot of money to develop the Council on Aging Building in West Concord, Harvey Wheeler. And the funds from renting spaces at Harvey Wheeler go back into the general fund, and it's been a hard problem, because maintaining Harvey Wheeler is expensive as well. So I'd urge a vote no.
All right, I don't think I see anybody else at a microphone. This one is a majority vote, not a two-thirds, and we've been working for a while now, so let's do this as a standing vote. So all those in favor, stand and wave your paper slip in the air. Okay, you can.
Both arms if you want.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All those opposed, stand and put your paper slips in the air. Okay, that passes by well over a majority, and I do so declare. We have, we addressed Article 14 on Monday night, and we'll now move to Article 15. And that is the Concord-Carlisle Regional High School budget, and I'll ask for a second for the motion, which you see on the screen. I see that we have one. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll shift gears now to the high school. This year, we're bringing you a budget request, an overall request for the entire budget. I will do that number first, and then we'll talk on Concord's assessment. The assessment to Concord this year is $23,344,987. A little bit of background on the high school budget, we use the same process, so I won't talk all through that again, in terms of making sure that we started from scratch on all areas of the budget, personnel, materials, special education, the same legal fee charged carried over, contracted services, and continual reorganization of personnel and other cost centers. A primary part of our discussion this year at the high school focused on OPEB and our excess and deficiency account, so that's going to be the highlight of our conversation here tonight. OPEB, as you know, is post-benefit retirement benefits, and we need to be sure that we're funding that at the region, just like the town is at the local level. Our excess and deficiency account is the equivalent to free cash that the town carries. The region has very specific guidelines in terms of maximums. It's a 5% maximum, and ideally, you'd be somewhere at 3% to 4%. In terms of budget drivers, we are, this year, looking at fairly stable drivers. We had, the Concord-Carlisle Teachers Association contract is in its mid-year, so that was predictable and on par with other years. Contracted services increased slightly for both special education and facilities work. We do carry health benefits within the regional budget, so we have to accommodate for percentage increases, just like the town does in their budget, and then some other smaller amounts towards software and hardware. Cost savings through the zero-based budgeting process, we were able to tighten up on transportation. Much of this is because we have a year of the late start time that was so thankfully supported under our belt, so we can really know what we need for busing services. We did some of that same reallocation and cleanup of the tutor salary lines, and we were able to reduce $100,000 in special education tuitions. Also of note, the high school debt is coming down at this point, and since this is the regional budget, all of that's embedded within the big picture, so we do have a reduction to Concord of $200,000, a little over, for debt reduction off the high school project. An example of the retirement and separation savings for this year at the high school, less teachers were eligible, and the totals reflect that. But again, it still equates to some relatively decent money over time, so we feel success in that creative endeavor. OPEB, let's give you a status update on that. We've been working very hard to always consider funding at the ARC, which is the formula that helps you to know that you're going to be in a great shape and sustainable in terms of funding retirement benefits. So you can see the history there. We had a lot of discussion this year in the budgeting process. You'll see, last year... process. You'll see, last year, we funded $600,000, and this year, we have funded $563,000. Our total fund balance as of last June, when it was last confirmed, was $3,734,391. So we felt, we felt good about that. And then we've been really watching our excess and deficiency account, and we went into this year at under 3%, and that needed to be looked at. We heard from Moody's in November while we were building the budget, that the pattern they saw was an ongoing use of the stabilization account for revenue. And so common sense budgeting is if you're pulling money from a one-time source, you can only do that for so long before you're going to have a pretty significant issue. So the past two years, you can see we're close to $700,000 in using excess and deficiency for revenue. This year, we made a very conservative effort to change that direction, much, much reflective because Moody's was very clear with us that that ongoing usage was potentially going to impact our bond rating, which then impacts the bond rating of both towns. So knowing that that message was coming loud and clear, we worked very hard this year and collaborated with the finance committee to cut that number in half. And so revenue this year is $350,000 from excess and deficiency, and we expect to continue in that pattern with a goal of zero from excess and deficiency. I say next year, my finance director says the year after, so stay tuned for how we go forward. Assessment comparison without the debt, then, as you look at where we're at coming into this year, the overall increase to Concord this year is 4.44%. Again, that's without the debt, so it's actually slightly lower than that. Carlisle, I don't know if you remember, last year, we had an enrollment shift that equated to about $500,000 additional to Concord, because the assessment is completely based on enrollments of each community on October 1st. This year, it stayed fairly level, which actually meant that Carlisle had to swing back up a little bit again. So you'll see they're, they're facing a slightly higher increase. With the debt, you can see the differences are lower because that number actually is a reduction, as I mentioned, as the high school comes off. So we're proud of this budget as well. I think we feel like the zero-based budgeting process really tightened up. We know where our money is, we know how we're spending it, and we're able to bring you a budget we're proud of that is an operational increase of 4.44%, inclusive of corrections to E and D, OPEB, health insurance, and our educational costs. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Both the select board and the finance committee recommend affirmative action on Article 15, and I will note that as of 8 o'clock, we had 300 people, 300 voters checked into town meeting. So, questions or comments on Article 15? Seeing none, I think we are ready to proceed to a vote on Article 15. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, thank you very much. All those opposed, that carries near unanimously. I always hesitate to say unanimously because it's possible I missed one slip of paper somewhere, so it's near unanimous, and I do so declare. And we will now take up Article 16.
Thank you. Article 16 is one that we bring to you, hoping you'll be open to hearing the entire story. I think we've had a lot of feedback that there's mixed sentiment, so I come into this knowing that. But I also hope you'll hear why the request is here. We are asking for $1,785,000. It's late, I've been here for three nights, let's try that again. $1,785,618 for improvements to the high school campus. So you'll see what we're hoping for tonight is consideration of finishing of the high school project. The access road that begins in Thoreau and ends at Walden Street was never completed. It's still in the condition it was at the conclusion of the project, after being driven on all through the project. And we have needs with cracking and deterioration of the, of the road. We'd like to install some more lighting for safety purposes. It's very minimally lit right now. Sidewalks would be included in that. There's some deterioration, especially along the Memorial Field stretch. And then we have had an ongoing conversation that I'm going to get into more depth on. We're requesting funding to be able to restore parking spaces that were eliminated following the completion of the high school project. So if you look at the map, the access road, like I said, goes along from Thoreau to Walden. The proposed additional parking, and I'll give you a little bit of background as to how we got to this location through the work we did over the past, really, six to eight months, would be, if you all know where the landfill is and where that space has been remediated, it's on the upper portion of that, towards the upper slope of the hill. And right now, we're suggesting that we would like to put 104 spots there. So let's talk through how we got here and why this request has come forward. Like I said, the access road was part of the construction project. It was value engineered out at the conclusion of the project, so it was not incorporated into the cost of the high school. The old parking lot, which was actually where the landfill is, actually housed about this number of spaces. Since the landfill remediation, it is now just grass, and we're, the goal was to better understand what we had for options with that space, and I'll talk on the work that we did this fall with GALE Engineering. So we have now done all the homework to realize and formalize that we have 135 fewer parking spaces than we did in the old high school. And those are legal spots, not counting other illegal parking where you could just park anywhere, and it wasn't addressed as a problem. It was allowed. And I guess the point we need to make tonight, this is an ongoing discussion for us. We have chronic, chronic concerns and complaints from our families, from our kids, sometimes from community members when they're coming here. Really challenging situation to manage and to respond to folks who are looking for a relief valve on something that right now we don't have to offer them, and we'll talk on the strategies we've, we've tried. Since 2015, here are some of the strategies. The school committee tried a wait-and-see approach. They, they did not put additional spaces in to restore to the prior amount, and that decision was an attempt, and I know there's a lot of sustainability commitment in the room. We agree with that. You heard that the other night. Hoping that it would just change the demand. And I think what we've learned is that that didn't play out that way. We are committed to continuing that conversation, but change is slow, and we are hoping for consideration to take, take the edge off of it while we do that work. In 2016, we moved the faculty parking to the upper lot, up next to the Doug White Field. Last year, we tried a number of different things. We numbered the spaces and assigned kids particular spaces. We included the BD road in that work. The loop road we were just talking about, that had not been assigned. What kids had been doing prior to assigning the spaces is coming to school very early in the morning, parking along the side of the road at 6:30, despite the later start time, I will add, and sleeping in the car to make sure that they could get a space. So what we tried to do by assigning spaces and numbering them was to prevent the first-come, first-served mindset. We found that that has its pros and has a lot of cons, because kids start parking in spaces that aren't theirs, and then there's a trickle-down effect of more kids being displaced, and it turns into another layer of ongoing complaints. Last year, we tried to get creative and rent spaces from the BD Center, giving them, we do collect a fee, that will be something you'll want to know, $300 per space. So we worked with the BD Center and the Recreation Department and said, could we have 20 spaces during the school day? You can have the fees. Sounded good until it turned into pretty much a nightmare for the BD members, and so we've undone that agreement, realizing it just wasn't working the way we had hoped. The school committees had a lot of ongoing discussion about the use of the campus. The landfill precipitated some of that discussion, but there'd been other hopes down the line, dreams that maybe wanted to be considered. So during the last school year, 1718, we formed a campus advisory committee that met throughout the length of the year. That was a very open-ended committee, taking feedback from the community about what they might wish for on the high school campus, meant to really solicit all sorts of ideas. This fall, we then created the Campus Oversight Subcommittee, who took those top priorities and vetted them. Among those top priorities, the parking certainly hit the list. There is a wish list for a track down the road, which we wanted to be sure we considered. As we considered the options, we don't want to put a parking lot in, and the only space a track might go, and preclude the option eventually. So that led to the hiring of GALE associates to do a study of the campus. You'll remember at special town meeting, we did not move that motion because we had unexpected revenues, and we funded the study directly through the operating budget. And then in the late part of 2018 and 2019, I gathered a number of those who wanted to work with us on sustainability and have been meeting with them regularly, along with Kate Hanley, our Town Director of Sustainability, and we've really started to put together a vision of our school's efforts towards sustainability and all the ways and goals that we want to set. So despite all of that, here's where we're at. There's not enough space for the kids. We have only allowed seniors to park, so the junior class was told in the fall that there would not be parking for them this year. So they are either complaining or getting rides, or, yes, some of them are on the bus. Some of them are on Laurel Street and parking and walking up here, and it's whatever way they choose, but it's certainly an unmet demand right now. Visitor spaces are a very big challenge. We only have 10 assigned visitor spaces, so if you come here for a meeting during the day, myself included, it's very challenging to park, and we end up parking wherever we can. In town meeting is a good example of how we can struggle for large community events, and we sometimes are not as sure we can host because we know we're going to have a parking issue. And then the ongoing stress, the school committee is very gracious to make sure, I mentioned how time-consuming this is for myself and the high school principal. We admit it is, but I think that's part of what you pay us for, so that's okay. Why are the kids driving? Everyone wants to know why they're not on the bus, right? Our kids are very, very active, and in percentages of 85% of the student population are better, who are in clubs or sports or all sorts of other things. The schedule of the buses is very challenging for them to meet their needs. The late, we do run late buses. It's also a very long ride home, so I'm sure that that's factoring in. You can see the list of some of their obligations, whether it be sports, and we do have some sports teams that don't practice here. They might have a job, they're caring for someone in the house. They're in multiple teams, a lot of our kids, not just, not just high school-sponsored sports, and a lot of active music performances and lessons as well. GALE associates, then, when we worked with them this fall, in terms of making sure we had space, they also had to take in mind our impervious surface restrictions that we need to work through the Resource Commission on, and the public water supply that the high school sits adjacent to. So they've been able to propose 100 spaces for an estimated cost of $790,000. I want to break that out for you a little, and I know I'm running long. I hope you'll give me a minute, Carmen. Half of that, about, is a typical parking lot. Because of the complications of the drainage and the landfill, there's a lot of contingency in there. We worked with the Concord DPW and asked them to review this. They very graciously, thanks to Rich Rain, Director, over the last two weeks, have confirmed that number. Then until we have a full design made, we can't, we can't know if we can lower that. So it's possible it would come in less than that, and we would not borrow more than it would actually come in to bid for. And then just last piece on the access road, it's just in great need, and it's going to continue to deteriorate if we don't do anything. The cost that was estimated by GALE there is $1.2 million. Gravel subways, compacting, you can see the details. The DPW took on the design work for us. We're enormously grateful. They've actually just saved the district $111,000 with their efforts over the last two weeks to validate what they see as need, and come in with a cost of $996,000 with the savings you see mentioned there, which is why the article that was originally at $2 million is proposed to you tonight for $1.7 and a little better. So those are the numbers that we're talking about. Our hope is to finish the high school project, and that is our request tonight.
Thank you. We'll give you a little slack on this one because you were well under time on your last couple of articles.
I banked it from the other night, great.
Do we have a second for the motion under Article 16? I see that we do. And I will say that the Finance Committee recommends no action. That's, that's still your recommendation, yes? Okay. Finance Committee recommends no action, and the Select Board recommends affirmative action, but by a divided vote of three to two on Article 16. Okay, so, microphone number four.
Thank you very much. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road.
Ms. Proctor.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle. Reflecting the divisions of the community and of the Select Board, and it sounds like a little bit the FinCom, we take no position on this particular article, but we wish to speak to two points. The first is that we would like to acknowledge and thank the school committee for their work to reduce the original costs that were presented in the warrant article. So that takes time, that takes work, that takes determination, and we're grateful for that. However, and this is not merely the burden of the school committee, we wish to reiterate what we mentioned under Article 7. We urge the town to establish in 2019 a comprehensive collaborative capital fiscal planning process to study the needs, costs, and prudent timing for large anticipated capital projects, and to consider the impact of those costs on taxpayers to the citizens of Concord, thereby giving the town an opportunity to perhaps extend, spread out, and retime some of its anticipated projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Judy Terry, 368 College Road.
Ms. Terry.
I have a question, and then possibly a comment. I'd like to know how many parking permits are currently student parking spaces? I'm sorry. How many parking spaces are student parking, parking spaces, and how many permits are issued to the students?
Right now, we're issuing approximately 235 permits per year.
And how many places?
The same amount.
Okay, then I will make my comment. I was up here on Monday morning at 10:15, and I drove completely through the parking lot, and there were 51 empty spaces. I was in charge of parking at the Harvard Observatory for several years, and we always issued more permits than we had spaces because people are sick, people don't come to school for a variety of reasons, they don't drive to school for a variety of reasons, and it's a much more efficient way to use the parking lot than it is one person, one space.
May I, we'd love to hear your expertise on that, so thank you for any ideas. One other complicating factor for us is our open campus policy here. So the upperclassmen, who are the ones who are driving, can leave campus when they're not in a formal structured class. So it adds another variable of management to your point of, could we share spaces or things like that? Doesn't mean we can't figure it out, it just means it's another layer.
Yes, I was picking a time to come up here that I assumed students had arrived at school, and it wasn't lunchtime.
Yeah, no, their open campus privileges roll when other, their free period does.
Has, has someone done a number of counts to make sure that, that it's being efficiently used?
To the best of our manpower right now, we are.
I'll volunteer.
Oh, we'll take you up on that.
And I'll give you a report.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, I do want to remind us that we are deliberating and asking questions as an assembly, and so please direct your questions and comments to the moderator, and we'll try to avoid devolving into a back-and-forth between the speaker at the podium and any one individual. So, microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, my name is Michael McAtter. I live at 1615 Lowell Road-
Mr. McAtter.
...and am a member of the Concord Climate Action Committee. Tonight, I'm speaking as a citizen. Article 16 asks the town to approve funding for the reconstruction of the access roads and sidewalks to the campus, in addition to improved exterior lighting. This will place a focus on the importance of maintaining the current road and sidewalk infrastructure and upgrading the exterior lighting to high-energy efficiency design, all of which advance safety practices and reduce the long-term operation and maintenance costs. This is a sensible investment to protect the integrity of our buildings. However, I believe the second part of the article that advocates for a construction of a parking lot and adding capacity of roughly 100 automobiles is moving the town in the wrong direction. The supply of adequate parking for our schools has been a challenge for many years, going back to the planning that was conducted with the Alcott School that I was engaged in. Our after-schools exemplary program for students has expanded, as well as the need to provide for higher levels of accessibility for the campus for all our students, faculty, parents, and visitors. We've solved this dilemma for the past many years. We've solved this dilemma for the past many years by simply adding parking capacity. I believe we're at an inflection point where solving our problems with the same thinking and outcomes create a missed opportunity that runs counter to the principles and goals that we've adopted by leadership to address greenhouse gas emissions. I believe that the core of what we need to improve is better ways to address mobility and convenience for all who want to visit the campus. There are significant transformations that we are all familiar with, the advent of on-demand technologies, and it's possible with innovative and practical new thinking, we can do better than to encourage more cars on the campus. I'm not convinced that the challenge that we face, identified in Article 16, is as much about parking lots, cars, and buses than it is to have a clearer understanding of what is possible as we look toward more modern, sustainable transportation and mobility practices. I urge the town meeting to reject Article 16 and in its place, encourage an innovative pathway forward that's aligned with our principles, values, and goals and that we have adopted to do our share to safeguard our environment and well-being. I believe we can do better, we must do better.
Okay, you do need to stop. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Hello, Brian Folds, 33 Riverdale.
Mr. Folds.
I am a member of the Climate Action Board as well as a former member of the Energy Task Force and a former member of the School Bus Alternative Fuel Committee. This, this article, if you can go to slide five, please, where it shows the timeline of the committees. So this is a, this is a cultural problem we're having here in Concord, which is one of putting sustainability at the end of the list. The best financial way to do sustainability is to think of it at the beginning of the process. By going with the idea of we need more parking, how do we solve getting more parking is not the approach that we should take going forward in the future. There is a town mobility issue. We have the COA buses for over 65, we have the school buses for, for kids in school. In between, we don't have much. I would like to suggest that the access road, instead of just replacing and putting back exactly what exists today, that we put a protected bike lane in there. It is, you know, once we replace that road, it's not going to change for quite a long time. By putting a protected bike lane and advocating with the town to add protected bike lanes, that gives another way for people to move around town that does not require more parking. We have restaurants that have limited seating because they don't have the parking. We have a new library wing, we have a, you know, the, the other center that are requiring more parking. We need to find other kinds of solutions. I am actually going to vote in favor of this article because the reason that we have people at the school is to educate our children and they are dealing with this issue today and it is causing a lot of stress amongst the faculty and the, and the administration for being parking managers when their job is to educate our children.
Okay, that's great, and it's time for you to wrap up.
Okay. But in the future, if something like this comes forward, I would not support it.
Thank you very much. Microphone number five.
Ramon Canza at 36 Brister's Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
I have a number of comments and questions. Up until recently, my understanding was the consideration was for a gravel parking lot that would satisfy the needs of adding additional parking spaces, would not impact the impermeable surfaces, and be completed at a much lower cost. So the first question is, how did an economical solution change to one that's much more expensive?
You know what? Why don't you ask all of your questions and then we'll ask Superintendent Hunter to address them.
Okay. The second concern that I have is with regards to the old landfill that we have a cap on and that the landfill extends underneath the access road and that according to the drawings and data that's available in the website and research that was done, my concern is that if you start to dig up the access road, that you're going to disturb old landfill which has contaminants. So the question that I have is, did the DPW in their engineering evaluation consider the old landfill, the contaminated waste site, monitoring wells, et cetera, when they were doing their evaluation for the engineering and also for the cost?
Thank you very much. Superintendent Hunter?
First, I'll answer the gravel question. We were as hopeful as you just sounded that that might be an option in working with the NRC. Gravel is actually considered to allow fluid through. So in terms of that, we were, there was concern over the gas and other oils from the cars going into the public water supply, so that that was a concern and one of the reasons the gravel was eliminated. It also can compact and then be considered impervious. So we found it was a very complicated, challenging solution that wasn't going to work. In terms of the DPW work, they used all of the site plans and all of the information that was on file, both here in the town and available to Gail Engineering, so all those factors have been considered.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Christian Krueger, 85 Alcott Road.
Mr. Krueger.
So, quick show of hands, how many people have graduated from CCHS in the past decade in this room? Okay, yes, past decade. So the reason I say that is because I did. I graduated in 2013 and the parking was bad then. There was a lot of kids trying to get in on a daily basis and for those kids, it can be the difference between having an after-school job, being able to do an after-school activity. And some people rely upon the network of their friends, be they juniors or seniors, to participate in after-school activities. As a friend of my father's once put it, "It takes a village to raise that kid." And I was that kid, because my mother is disabled, my dad works all the time, and so in order to get rides from the plays that I did, from track that I participated in, I needed to rely on friends to get me to and from places because very often the school buses and late buses weren't going to go where I was needing to go. So that allowed me to participate in these after-school activities. It's very important that a lot of kids have the freedom of movement to go to and from the school during the school day and after the school day to help make sure that kids who are, you know, have limited access to mobility themselves are able to participate in these things. As to the ecological question, I don't think 100 cars is going to move the needle much either way. And it's not going to take them off the road either. It's just going to decide whether or not they're at the school helping kids get to and from educational activities, get food in the morning, get, you know, able to come in on time since they have A Block off or something. It's going to help a lot of kids if we have these parking spots. And as a last note, imagine what would happen in town meeting right now if we had another water bottle fight. Imagine the parking situation. It would be a horror. So please vote yes on this. Thank you.
Microphone number three.
Hugh McCrory, excuse me, Hugh McCrory, 59 Lee Drive, Concord.
Yes, Mr. McCrory.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. Yeah, I would really like to vote for this article, but I, I think it's a missed opportunity to put both these projects into one article. I would like to understand why the, this access road is considered in part of the school budget, since it's also used by the BD Center and many aspects around town, I mean, many other events essentially that are held near the BD Center. Why is it a school budget capital project? The paving, the, the first part.
Sure. So all of this land is regional land, so it's the obligation of the regional school district to maintain and improve it.
Okay.
All set?
One other point, I guess it's, I'm not really, it's more of the, I think it's a missed opportunity from sustainability as well. I think there's a strong need for parking and I, I can definitely see that. So that side, I would vote for it. But on the other side, I think it's a really missed opportunity for the sustainability aspect of the parking, just to be adding 100 more spots, but yet no other alternate solutions that have been mentioned before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Microphone number two.
Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street.
Mr. Kleiman.
I'm a former co-chair of the Long Range Plan Committee and I just wanted to reflect, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, I'm just speaking as an individual now who was participating in that process. Article 16 is not consistent with Concord's sustainability principles, nor with the integrated planning approach that we adopted in the comprehensive long-range plan. The long-range plan identified five community criteria that are specific to Concord, which were to be applied to all planning and projects and decision-making to assure that all of our actions would be integrated with sustainable growth while preserving the town's history, culture, and values. The plan specifically recommended that carpooling be incentivized and encouraged, including for high school students, to reduce the amount of traffic and congestion from the high school. In my view, the proposed expenditure will not accomplish multiple goals, it's not integrated with the core educational mission of the high school, but rather it seeks to provide more parking for the convenience of a few. The article includes no forward-thinking intention to reduce cars and traffic in Concord to mitigate the increased greenhouse gas emissions and decrease air quality by bringing more cars to the high school. There's no suggestion of a solar canopy, no suggestion of pervious pavement, no suggestion of providing parking for electric vehicles, no design for incentivizing carpooling to offset the expenditure. While the analogy is imperfect, given that it's a former landfill, it's a 1960s solution of paving over paradise to put up a parking lot. I consider this article to be incomplete at this point and therefore premature, so I will be voting no.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Tina Labadini, 154 Southfield Road.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank all of Concord for helping to raise my children with the open mind to sustainability. They have learned tremendously from the rebuild of Willard and the high school and all other efforts that I am very passionate about sustainability-wise. But I would like to speak to the real impact that this situation is having on our children. I appreciate that Dr. Hunter listed how busy they all are. That's not news to any of you. We're all very busy. They're taking on incredible challenges and we are graduating super talented children that go on to do great things. And because of that, they're really busy. They take extremely challenging classes, they work really hard. I have a junior who drives and a senior who's been driving since his sophomore year. Given all of the challenges, the sports they play, the coaches they work with, the classes they take, when I ask them what is most stressful, they say parking. That is unfortunate. They shouldn't be facing parking as a challenge. I do believe it's reasonable to say we help our children think about other ways to get to school, but all of the effort that's been put forth to make this better, I think, shows that we have tried lots of different issues and our kids have tried to work within that. I've, I've tried to help them to work with folks to come up with solutions and I feel we're at a place where it's causing more stress than it's worth. And more importantly to me, our administration is spending way too much time on this issue. We have extremely talented teachers. Mr. Mistrullo is much more distracted by this than I care for him to be. And I have seen our security officer, who I very much admire, in the parking lot and I would much rather him in this school protecting my children.
Thank you very much. Microphone number five.
Excuse me. Bernie Jenkins, 32 Stafford Charlie.
Ms. Jenkins?
Nobody said anything about bicycles.
Well, I, I do think we heard a suggestion for bike lanes. Would you like to talk about bicycles?
Well, we don't have bike lanes in town and it's, it's life-threatening, but I really think the town should be thinking about that. I know the Concord Climate Action Speaker Series collected a couple, $200, $300 and, and contributed it to a bike rack at the high school so that the bikes could be safely kept. And I'm wondering how many people ride their bicycles to school? Do we have, do we know anything about that?
Very few right now.
That would be so good for the environment and so good for their physical health and all of that stuff. So I would really urge somebody to promote that.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Paul Jameson, 419 College Road, 84 years old, and I ride a bicycle around Concord.
Okay, well, good for you, sir.
Thank you. But I live out on College Road, I'm about three and a half or four miles away. It would take me about 15 or 20 minutes to go from my house to the high school here on my bicycle. And what I see here is that the facilities for parking bicycles are very, very limited. There's a rack that's outside, it's not, if you arrived here in, and it was going to rain, your bicycle would get wet. And bicycles don't have metal covers on the top the way cars do, so you need a roof of some sort. It would be easy, it seems to me, in this large space to find or build a place for 200 bicycles with a covered roof of some sort. Could even be an awning, but it might be, the, the feeling I have looking around here is that the environment, the, the small number of racks, it's not inviting for somebody to come here by bicycle because all the attention seems to have been given to cars. Huge parking space for cars, but virtually nothing for bicycles. And it's a perfectly good way to get around in town. And it would be nice if the town roads were a little bit safer, but I haven't been killed yet.
Godspeed, sir. Microphone number three.
My name is William Plummer. I live at 129 Arena Terrace.
Mr. Plummer.
I support this, this article. I don't think it's necessary to spend quite that much money on the parking spaces, though. 13 months ago, I got in touch with Najoba Paving, the company that built my own driveway, and I asked what it would cost to build a parking space. They said, "What do you mean? Where?" And after a long discussion, a gentleman named Dave Baker went out to visit the campus, looked it over, and came back with a reason to quote for me for two different sized lots. First lot happened to be about what we're talking about, room for 120 cars, a few more. And the, the price for, for space was about $2,030, which is less than a third of what we're talking about for the 7,000 spaces. I think that it's worth taking a good look at what it really cost to get that paved. I put these numbers in an email back on March 18th, 13 months ago, so it's accessible. Now, with respect to the greenhouse gases, I'm against greenhouse gases like everybody else, but that's a different issue. If you really want to make a big cut in the greenhouse gases, you could do that right now by parking the buses on all the empty spaces you have now at the high school just at night. They're making two round trips per day to Knox Trail, that's not necessary. We could save a lot of greenhouse gases right there.
Thank you.
I support this, this article and I think you can do it for less money than it's advertised.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Cynthia Katz, 20 Conant Street.
Ms. Katz?
Thank you. I'm, I'm pretty sorry that the parking is part of this. I wish that you had separated that out because I think it's something that a lot of people could get, maybe get their minds around the other things, but not the parking. Mr. Kleiman said, "Everything I was going to say, except my suggestion that maybe the high school becomes a site for a bike sharing program in Concord so that we can really start to live the sustainability that we're talking about." And just putting more parking and paving more areas is, we're running out of time. And the kids who are going to, I, I had a kid who went to the high school, not this one, but the other one. And of course, when he got his driver's license, the first thing he said is, "I'm going to be the only person that doesn't have a car to go to the high school." And I said, "No, you're not going to be the only person." And carpooling and figuring out things, yeah, kids are busy. I teach high school kids, they're busy. But one of the things, slides that you put up talked about that they needed their own cars to go to after-school sports, golf. I can't remember the four things that were up there. And my first thought is, And my first thought is, why aren't we busing them the way we bus the baseball team or the other things? So I can't support this with just paving over parking. There are a lot of things that we can do to start to get kids to get, and adults in this town, to understand that just putting more cars on the road is not the answer. And there must be at the high school a group of students who are working on greenhouse gas and climate change issues who could get their minds around things that could be more sustainable than this thing.
Thank you. I believe Superintendent Hunter would like to say something about bicycles?
Just two points to clarify. One is, we did consider whether we could split these, and this was confirmed by the DPW. In order to do any parking work, you want to do them simultaneously, because if we did the roadway first, the drainage issues are so complicated, potentially, that you might have to dig up the road you just fixed if you put the parking in. I just want to also make sure you all know, we are working with the green team at the high school. We are brainstorming ideas. We are looking at how to incentivize kids, all of those things. We're looking at the bike racks. We're looking at electric charging stations. All of those things are in the works, so I just feel the need to go on record with that.
Thank you. And I want to point out that we have been discussing this article for just under 40 minutes, and we do have a lot of articles left. I see there are lots of you. I'm going to ask just a little straw poll. Raise your voting slip if you've already made up your mind how you're going to vote on this article. Great. Raise your slip if you haven't decided yet. Okay, most of you have decided. The vast majority have decided, so just bear that in mind. Microphone number one.
Thank you. David Bell, 1657 Monument Street.
Yes, sir.
Can we get, I'd like an explanation from the Finance Committee as to why they voted no action.
Sure. Who would like to speak on behalf of the Finance Committee? Well, that leaves a chair, Mr. Tarpe.
Tom Tarpe, 169 Heathbridge Road, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Tarpe.
Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee has decided to vote no action on this article for numerous reasons. I would say foremost among them is the belief that not all other less capital-intensive solutions to this problem have been explored. We talked a great deal about this, and I think that was the most prominent reason. We think that there's a lot of human potential that hasn't been harnessed among the student body in terms of finding a solution to this issue. In terms of our decision to vote no action on the article, it is focused on the parking rather than on the road replacement.
Thank you very much. Let's see, that was over there. Let's go back over here. Microphone number five.
Robin Garrison, 53 Middle Street.
Ms. Garrison.
I want to point out something that was not raised, and that is, we have really nice, beautiful fields and athletic facilities that are, have a capacity that is a lot greater than has been years past. And because of that, we have many visiting parents who would like to see their children play. And not only is the parking an issue for current students, but also for the parents of athletes that wish to come and see their children play because of these wonderful, beautiful fields. And if you've ever come over here, when there are four games going on in the springtime, there is absolutely nowhere to go. There's, people are making spaces. People are inhibiting emergency vehicles for coming up on the access roads. So this issue is not only about the students, but also any visitors to our beautiful town and our lovely facilities.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Tracy Morano, 39 Partridge Lane.
Yes, Morano.
I have four kids. One just graduated last year. I have a sophomore, an eighth grader, and a fifth grader, and the parking issue actually affects all of them. So my daughter at Alcott, there are 45 cars that are parked every single day on Laurel Street, and those are all sophomores and juniors trying to rush to class. So they start their school day off with a run from Laurel Street all the way up to the high school. And if you have science a block, you're going to the fourth floor. So they are getting their exercise in, but, you know, to start your day off under stress is significant. And every single meeting that I've attended at this high school, whether it's a parent association meeting, a principal coffee, parking comes up at every single meeting. And I would prefer that Dr. Hunter and Mr. Mistrullo deal with issues of stress in the school. They deal with, you know, safety. Other things have come up this year, and the top thing that they're dealing with is parking. And I know that people want kids to carpool. I carhooled here with a friend tonight. I'm not sure if anybody else carhooled here, but I did carpool because I was worried about parking. It is constantly an issue. I came to a special ed coffee. There was no parking. So what are you going to do? You're going to either leave or park illegally. And that is the reality of the parking situation here, and I understand you want kids to carpool. But I'll tell you, my sophomore cannot carpool till the end of her senior year, because it's not legal for her to drive other kids in the car with her. And I just think you need to just take a pause and think about what our kids have to deal with every single day. And if you went to work and had to have a run into your office every day, you wouldn't start your day off that great. So I want my kids to come to an environment where they can learn and be prepared for school and not deal with the stress of parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Bob Tritman, 43 Middle Street.
Mr. Tritman.
Quick question. Is this our, the 1.7 just conquered, or is this split Concord-Carlisle?
Oh, I was just going to clarify that before you voted. It needs to be split, so the Concord share is 1.3, $1,339,213. The remaining balance would be Carlisle's.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Ellen Petry, 84 Minute Man Drive.
Ms. Petry.
Thank you. I am concerned about the overall tax burden. I don't want to live in a town where, you know, that doesn't have a mix of seniors and young families, and I think we need to be thinking about the balance of everyone's needs. And I'm also concerned about the environmental impact, and it seems like we have a more of a, I can hear the stress in everyone's voices about the parking, but I think we need a more globally-thinking kind of solution, especially when I hear about issues with library parking and the expansion in parking with that. And I'm just wondering if we've thought globally enough about it so that we're not making the wrong choice, spending money on the wrong choice. And I have one last question, which is, I'm an avid swimmer at the BD Center, and that parking lot is half-full most of the time. I know that there, the parking situation, there was a renting of spaces there. I remember when that started. I have a lot of swimmer friends who swim there all the time, and the comment to me is, "I wonder whatever happened to that? There's, you know, these, got these empty spaces. The BD Center needs the money." And if you could speak to that, that'd be great. Thanks.
Superintendent? Kate Hodges, because she would better be able to answer that. There were chronic issues, people not being able to access parking to get into the BD Center. Some of our students were creeping in there when they maybe shouldn't have been. It became an ongoing discussion, and Kate and I ended up in a regular email exchange of license plates and hunting down kids and complaints from the BD Center members. So it just proved to be more complicated than it looked. Perhaps it can be revisited, but we took a hiatus from that plan, given its first try.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Richard Warren, 25 Upland Road.
Mr. Warren.
I'd like to call a question, but before I do, I have a question.
No, you can't do that, because you either choose to talk or move the question. Those are your options.
I just wanted clarification.
Well, then you can't call the question. That's fine.
Then let's move the question.
Huh?
Let's call the question.
Okay. All right then. So that is, is there a second for calling the question? I see that there is. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of calling the question, thank you very much. All those opposed, thank you. We will now go on to vote on Article 16. Now, it doesn't say so on the slide, but this is in fact, actually, you know, I have a note here. No, it's not. Okay, this is a majority vote. And the reason is because it is a ratification of the school's bonding authority. It's not an exercise by the town of its bonding authority. So this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 16? Thank you. All those opposed? Ooh. Okay. Why don't you put your ballots down? Let's do that one more time. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, we have to count this. Okay, we're going to, everyone needs to be in a seat. We need to close the doors. Tellers to your stations, please. Want to go to the bathroom? Yes. Okay. We're now ready to take our vote. Would all those in favor, please stand and raise your ballot.
Ay, 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 ay. This is the first time Stephanie got to go to the bathroom. Down me.
Did she run, too, in the other direction?
Yeah, she's running back now, yeah.
All right. We're ready for all those opposed to please stand and raise your ballot.
Dog has been very interested in my bag today, so. Is it doing all of ours? No, thank you. You're sure? I'm pretty sure this is the best offer you've had all night in terms of food and water. I saw it last night, and I just can't believe it. I'm here. Yeah. We got in the car. I was at, I was at a...
Make the details, make up that I was wrong.
Oh.
I was wrong.
Okay.
I usually have to train.
Right.
Particularly since I'm...
So.
You have to ask why.
Right.
And answer some public question.
Well, it's not that, it's not that the public can't get there so that, so that they're not in it worth it.
Remember that in college, it takes a case, and it's supposed to follow.
Yes, right. And it would still, everything would still follow.
So it would be awkward, but it's possible.
Thank you. So, so, we were the whole pair, and we saw them, and they had cards, and this was nice. And we gave them, gave them, gave them to his wife, I worked with, parents, and the children. No. And so I told them, and she told us, and she brought in the cards, and I said, "Oh, no, signatures on the cards?" So then the chief came over yesterday. He had signed one, but it bled with rain. So I brought in a pen. Yes, I think it's fun. I think this is wonderful. First of all, isn't that great? It's very positive. It's great for kids to have a bunch of, oh, Abe is writing.
No. I was completely unprepared, so I don't have a spreadsheet open yet. That's okay. I will have a spreadsheet open in about ten seconds. I always have to pre-add.
You want me to do some adding?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
If you can just make me a section. Yes, sir. I almost said, Mr. Tarpe. Go ahead.
Oh, man.
So, I brought in a pen. Yes, I think it's fun. I think this is wonderful. First of all, isn't that great? It's very positive. It's great for kids to have a bunch...
Want a chair?
No. I was completely unprepared, so I don't have a spreadsheet open yet. That's okay. I will have a spreadsheet open about ten seconds. I always have to pre-add.
You want me to do some adding?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Something there?
Yes.
Okay. We have our vote tally. And there were 290 votes. And the article fails by a vote of 151 to 139. And we'll now move on to Article 18. Article 17 was addressed on the consent calendar. And we don't have a motion under Article 18. And so, I will declare that the meeting is taking no action on it. And we will proceed to Article 19, but after we hear briefly from the Finance Committee with an explanation of why they've chosen not to move the article.
Tom Tarpe, 169 Heathbridge Road, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Tarpe.
Madam Moderator. Two years ago, a FinCom member who wishes to remain anonymous produced the now-famous Randall Curves.[729.00][729.00](Laughter). A revision of this chart appears in your Article 18 handout. Among other facts, the chart shows that between fiscal 2000 and fiscal 2020, the town's overall budget has grown at a rate triple that of the Consumer Price Index. Common sense leads one to suspect this increase is caused by a combination of inflation, an expansion of services, and increases in payroll-related costs. During the same period, the town's tax rate has remained relatively constant as the total assessed value of our tax base has also grown at a rate three times that of the CPI. The Randall Curves were presented in the context of the Finance Committee's long-running discussion of how effective the committee's traditional process has been in moderating the growth of town spending. FinCom believes such moderation is important to the preservation of economic diversity, a defining factor in the character of the town. We concluded that our traditional process has not been as effective as we might wish because it is mainly reactive, responding to a significant number of cost drivers which had been contractually committed as many as three years before they came before us for review. To be most effective in our responsibility to advise town meeting on the finances of the town, we decided it was necessary annually to debate and make recommendations on what we consider to be prudent and sustainable rates of growth in spending in the reasonably foreseeable future. Article 18 was drafted with this goal in mind. Parenthetically, the members of the Finance Committee are unanimously convinced that ongoing deliberate, long-term planning of large capital expenditures is a hallmark of a well-managed town and a clear necessity in the pursuit of prudent, sustainable growth. The Finance Committee has chosen not to move Article 18 because we believe its goal can be better achieved through other means. The Finance Committee intends to publish an annual statement of what it recommends to be prudent, sustainable rates of growth over a five-year horizon. The Finance Committee hopes all of the town's budgeting entities will use these recommendations as guideposts while exercising their cost-setting responsibilities, helping us to maintain economic diversity through sustainable growth.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe. Mr. Whalen? A motion on Article 19 is to take affirmative action as the article is printed in the warrant. And do we have a second for the motion? I see that we do. Thank you.
Chris Whalen, Town Manager. I live at 1935 Main Street.
Mr. Whalen?
There is a handout for this article. And it has both the bylaws. It's on two sides, one for Article 19 and one for Article 20. We want to look at the side that has the Town Meeting Notice bylaw in the center of it. Article 19 requests that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaw governing the method of notifying the public of a planned town meeting. We propose to eliminate an antiquated form of notice and insert in place of that a notification mechanism that is more in common usage today. The Town Meeting Notice bylaw currently requires that the Select Board post notice of a planned town meeting in at least one public location in each precinct in Concord. We are proposing to eliminate that phrase, shown here in red, and to insert in place of the phrase, and insert in its place, the phrase electronically on the town's website, as shown here in green. So that the bylaw would read, quote, "Notice of Town Meeting shall be given by posting an attested copy of the warrant, calling the same at the Concord Town House, and electronically on the town's website at least seven days before the day appointed for the annual town meeting," et cetera. Please note that the notice will continue to be posted on the Town Clerk's bulletin board at the townhouse. This slide shows the remainder of the bylaw, highlighting the section of the bylaw that will continue to require a town meeting warrant be mailed or otherwise delivered to every household in Concord. This slide shows the location of each precinct. We have five voting precincts. So, this slide shows where the town meeting warrant is currently posted in order to comply with the bylaw. Other than the townhouse, we don't believe that checking in these locations is the most likely or convenient method for the public to learn about a town meeting and review the warrant to find out about what town business will be coming up for discussion. For the special town meeting held last October 1st, we posted the warrant in the required precinct locations 13 days prior to the special town meeting, not the requisite 14 days. This error required the town to secure a special act of the Massachusetts Legislature, shown on this slide, declaring that the votes taken at the special town meeting in October were valid, notwithstanding the technical non-compliance problem. It required a heroic effort on the part of our town clerk, our state senator Mike Barrett, and former state rep Cory Atkins to secure the needed legislation. Otherwise, the votes to approve the settlement of litigation with W.R. Grace, to accept the gift of the White Pond land, and other actions taken at that special town meeting might have been legally challenged. The Town Meeting Notice bylaw was first adopted in 1905. There have been two minor amendments to the bylaw since that time, but no significant changes. I think it's time to adapt the bylaw to the newer communication methods and respectfully request your affirmative vote on Article 19.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whalen. We'll open the... Oh, I should note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on this article. Is there any comment or question from the floor? Looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article... Oh, sorry. All right, we got a question.
I don't think you can rely on computers. I voted absentee, for example, in the selectman election. And I was in New Hampshire, and I never found out who won because I don't have a computer and it wasn't on the website or somewhere. How do you know everyone has a computer?
Ma'am, you'll notice that the bylaw continues to require that a copy of the warrant be mailed to each and every household in town.
Oh, okay, that's okay. At least we get that.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, looks like we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 19? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Thank you very much. The article passes by a substantial majority, and I do so declare. And we will now move on to Article 20.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, on the other side of that handout, you'll see the Records Management bylaw. This Article 20 proposes that the town vote to delete the entire second paragraph of the Records Management bylaw and replace it with new language, as shown in the warrant. The Records Management bylaw was adopted under Article 42 of the Annual Town Meeting in 1990. This was at a time when the new archives facility was constructed using town funds in the basement of the expanded library. At that time, it was determined that the Select Board should designate a library employee to hold the position of municipal archivist. Massachusetts enacted a significant update to the state public records law, which took effect on January 1st, 2017. The new law requires, provides a central role to the town clerk, which the statute refers to as the municipal clerk. In a municipality, it can be challenging for the public to determine which department is likely to be holding a given public record or document, and the town clerk is required to assist the public in locating those records. The new law requires cities and towns to promptly and fully respond to the public's requests for records. Fines can be imposed for non-compliance. Also, under the town's charter, the town manager is designated as the appointing authority for all town employees, except for those of the school department and the town accountant. We are proposing to eliminate the language providing that the Select Board shall designate a library employee as the municipal archivist, and the language stating that the municipal archivist shall have oversight of the town records. We propose replacing that with the language providing for the town manager to appoint the municipal archivist, and for the archivist to report to the town clerk, who shall be responsible for the town's records and for compliance with the state's public records law. Shown here is the language as presented in the warrant, with the requirement that the municipal archivist be a library employee deleted, and the new language making clear that the town clerk will be responsible for managing the town's records and archives, including assisting with public records requests. The town record-keeping has been historically a decentralized operation, with records accumulating in the basements and attics of most of our town buildings. Some of those documents can be discarded and could be digitized to reduce the storage requirements. However, town department heads need assistance, the assistance of a municipal archivist, to sort through what can be discarded and what must be retained. Assistance is also needed to create proper conditions for the storage of records that must be permanently retained. The adoption of the new state public records law provides a good opportunity to focus attention on the need for a better system for protecting and preserving the town's records. The Records Management bylaw is now nearly 30 years old. It's due for updating. Additional updates may be needed in the future, once the new municipal archivist gets to work with the town clerk to devise a system for modernizing our record system, including archiving, storage, and retrieval. I request your favorable action on Article 20.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Do we have a second on the motion under Article 20? I see that we do. I would like to note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on the article. And we'll open the floor to questions and comments. Seeing none, it appears that we're ready for a vote on Article 20. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All those opposed? That is a near-unanimous vote, and I do so declare. We have addressed... Now, Mr. Whalen, was that your last presentation to Town Meeting?[1380.12][1380.12](Applause). We've addressed Article 21 on the consent calendar, and we will therefore move to Article 22, the Community Preservation Act, Community Preservation Committee Appropriation Recommendations. And we'll hear from Ms. Ackerman, who is the Chair of the CPC and soon to be our newest selectman. Can we have a second on the motion, please? Thank you very much. And this article is... Well, there is a motion, but you'll see the list of projects in the Finance Committee report in the warrant, and we'll see them on the screen now. Ms. Ackerman.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Terri Ackerman, Heathbridge Road, and Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Proceed.
Thank you. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, the Community Preservation Act is a... The revenue comes from a 1.5% out of a possible 3% surcharge on real estate property tax bills. Since 2006, Concord has funded over $20 million in CPA projects. There are several exemptions that you see on the screen here for income and senior adjustments. And the locally raised funds are matched on a percentage basis by the State Community Preservation Fund. This year, we received a match of 19%. So, the next slide, please. This year, we are recommending $1.8 million in CPA funding, $600,000 of recreation, $319,000 of community housing, historic preservation for $520,800, and open space projects for If you can go to the next slide, we'll go through each project quickly. The Regional Houses Services Program is a total of $38,000. Half of the funding comes from the General Fund in Article 6, the town budget that's already been appropriated. And the other half is recommended, the $19,000, to come from this article. The next slide shows Junction Village Affordable Assisted Living Development. As you probably know, this is our first entirely affordable assisted living development. We'll have 83 affordable units, with 43 at deeply affordable levels. We are recommending this year $300,000. And on the next slide, you will see the detail that this project is a total of $18 million. In 2017, the town appropriated free cash of $1 million. And this is the third year of three that CPA funding has been used, for a total of another $1 million, $2 million contribution from the town altogether. The next project on the next slide is the expansion and renovation of the main library and the Haywood Benjamin House. The CPA money will be used for preservation of the exterior of the Haywood Benjamin House and renovations to the interior spaces for ADA accessibility. We're recommending $500,000. And on the next slide, you'll see the total project is $10 million. $8.9 million are being raised privately. Article 7, we appropriated $550,000, and this article recommends another $500,000. The next slide shows the Timothy Wheeler House, 110 Walden Street Preservation. In 2016, there was a Historic Structures Report. And this is the next step, which will prepare the architectural designs, specs, and supporting documents needed for the permitting. The total project is $31,800, and we are recommending, under this article, $20,800, with $11,000 to come from the Concord home for the aging. The next project is the Giraud on the next slide, Giraud Recreation Area. This will provide for capital improvements, including the construction of the new park entrance, parking, paved connections to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and bike entrance, walking paths, blazed woodland trails, and water edge erosion control system and shoreline dock. We are recommending $200,000 this year. This will be, of course, year one of a multi-year project. The next project is White Pond Beach Access Improvements. This project will provide accessibility improvements to White Pond Beach, including the creation of a sloped and accessible walkway pathway, connecting the parking area to the waterfront, and renovation of the current restroom facilities to make them fully accessible. We are recommending $250,000. There's also $600,000 was appropriated under Article 7, and $300,000 will be gifted from the White Pond Association. Under the next slide, we see the Warner's Pond Dredging Project. We are recommending $75,000 for the first step, which is the permitting and associated work, just to get started on this multi-year project, which will probably cost over $1 million. The next project is the Emerson Land Acquisition, purchase of a 3.4-acre... Next project is the Emerson Land Acquisition, purchase of a 3.4-acre parcel of land located between the Ralph Waldo Emerson House and the access from Walden Street. It includes the Emerson Thore Amble and mil, portions of Mill Brook. We are recommending $90,000, and if you look at the next slide, the total cost for this project is $200,000. We have received a donation from the Concord Land Community Conservation Trust for $50,000, and we have appropriated $60,000 under Article 7, Municipal Capital Projects. And we're recommending $90,000 for this Article 22, under CPC. Next project is the Haywood Meadow Stonewall Extension. This will replace the bollards at the intersection of Haywood Street and Lexington Road. It's approximately 70 feet long. We're recommending $21,619, and there's an additional $5,300 of project staff in-kind services. You'll probably remember in 2012, we did Phase 1, the East Wall. In 2016, we did the West Wall. This little portion will connect the two walls for one contiguous stone wall. The next project is Old Calf Pasture, which will provide for continued removal of the invasive species glossy buckthorn, which will protect the largest population of the state-listed Britons violet. The recommended funding is $5,000, and we also have received a $10,000 gift from the Little Women Fund, and $2,000 of in-kind services, for a total project cost of $17,000. And our last project is the Emerson Field Improvements, including irrigation system upgrades, well redevelopment, baseball field and softball field renovations, improvements to the spray fountain, pathway installation, ADA upgrades, replacement of fencing, backstops, and player bench areas. We're recommending $300,000. And on the next slide, you'll see the detail. The total project cost is a little bit over $1 million. Previously, we funded, I think last year, $200,000, and other funding sources will provide $520,000. Finally, on the last slide, we have staff and technical support, which will provide signage, legal and consulting services, public notices, copying, other administrative expenses, and of course, funding staff support for $30,000. So, I urge your support on Article 22. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to note the recommendations. Sorry, my report backwards here. Both the Finance Committee and the Select Board recommend affirmative action on Article 22, and we'll now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number three.
Peter Seabert, 321 Hayward Mill Road.
Mr. Seabert.
I have a question regarding the Warner's Pond dredging. I apologize for not having followed this issue in the meetings, but in light of the fact that we now have White Pond available, or will soon have it available for swimming, what is the real purpose of the dredging, particularly if we're looking at $1 million?
Looks like Ms. Hodges is going to tell us about that.
Good evening. Kate Hodges, deputy town manager. We've been undergoing an assessment of Warner's Pond since before the Giraud property came on the market and became available, so both projects are now running simultaneously, but the pond health was an issue from before, even before swimming was considered. And so, we've noticed that there's a large amount of sediment in many of the different areas that are threatening the health and livelihood of the pond. And so, for that reason, we are starting the process of getting permitting underway to do dredging in certain areas to help with the overall pond health. Whether we want to move forward or not with swimming would be probably an additional dredging that we would come in at another town meeting and have several other public forums, but this is mainly for the health and livelihood of the pond.
So, not directly related to swimming?
Not directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Edward Perry, 362 Bedford Street.
Mr. Perry.
I have a question on Article 22, Section C, the $500,000 for the expansion and renovation of the main library, which is awarded under the category of historic preservation. Unfortunately, in my view, the public plans for the expansion and renovation is not preservation of a historic structure, but is rather a desecration of the historic district. I truly hope that the corporation listened last night during the discussion of the middle school to the suggestions from the Green Team as to how to build greener buildings. I've been handed an email from the architects of this project, which is full of explanations of why they can't make it greener, rather than trying to actually make this project greener. The clarification that I'd like to make from the chair of CPC, if she would be willing to talk about a condition that's been brought to my attention, that in fact, Section C, the $500,000, is conditioned upon prior approval of the HTC before the library would get this funding. I believe that's the condition. If I just get that verified, that would answer my question. Thank you.
Ms. Ackerman. You can stay up here in case there's more questions for you to answer.
I have here the draft conditions that the board reviewed, and once the article is appropriated, we will be sending out these conditions to the project recipients. And condition number five under this project for the library states, "Any project work on the exterior of the building that results in the change in design, material, color, or outward appearance thereof shall be reviewed and approved by the Historic District Commission. A copy of the certificate of appropriateness should be submitted for the CPC files." So, the answer is yes. The HTC will be reviewing and approving this project.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
I have a question regarding the improvements at the Emerson Field. I'm not sure this is still the case, but when my children were at the high school, the Emerson Field track was used as the primary location for track events and track practice for the high school. And I'm assuming that's still the case. I'm wondering to what extent the town of Carlisle is contributing to the overall maintenance of the track, and to what extent these improvements are directly related to the needs of the high school, and therefore of the regional district? And is there, is it fair that Concord is absorbing the full costs of the things which are attributable to the track areas that are used by the high school? Thank you.
Kate Hodges. The track is not part of this project, and the town of Carlisle is not contributing directly to the upkeep of the track. However, in the past couple of years, we've received a very generous donation from the Middlesex School for the upkeep and resurfacing of the track, so for that purposes, other than the interior field, the town of Concord hasn't been contributing yet to the track either, because we've been able to sustain that through donations. And regarding the high school, yes, it is still the main meeting site for track meets and practice. It's also one of the main sites that's used both by Middlesex School and Concord Academy. Does that answer all of the questions?
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else at a microphone. It appears that we are ready for a vote on Article 22. Would all those in favor please raise their ballots? Thank you very much. All those opposed? And I see that the motion carries by a near unanimous vote, and I do so declare. We have already addressed Articles 23, 24, 25, and 26, and we come therefore to Article And I believe we'll hear from Ms. Hodges, and the motion is there on the screen to move the article as printed in the warrant on transfer of a portion of the property on Commonwealth Avenue for affordable housing. Could we have a second for this motion? I see that we do. Thank you. Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 27 seeks authorization to transfer a small portion of land acquired by the town last year, known as Giraud Park, to the Housing Authority for the purposes of creating not more than one unit of affordable housing. Article 25 of last year's town meeting authorized the acquisition of seven acres of land located off Commonwealth Avenue, commonly known now as Giraud Park. The primary purpose of this acquisition was to create a public park and open space. However, it was agreed that a half an acre located along Commonwealth Avenue would be made available to up to one unit of available and affordable housing. Several months ago, the town commissioned an assessment and feasibility study relative to various options of housing which may be available on the site. The proposed house lot, which is shown here, indicated within the red circle, has been subdivided into a separate parcel, and once approved, will be available for a single-family home. The town has been working closely with the Mass DOT regarding the granting of an easement to cross a small section of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Phase 2C, shown here in yellow. The proposed driveway has been superimposed onto this map as a series of the green dashed lines seen here. The crossing in question is an area equal to about 20 feet in width over a five-foot section. Friday evening, the town was informed via letter from the Mass DOT that they had granted the town's request for access and will begin the process of actually creating a 99-year lease memorializing this agreement. However, in the unlikely event that 99 years from now, the state no longer wishes to renew the access agreement or honor it, the town may need to secure another avenue to access the park, which is why there are two separate scenarios regarding the home lot at this time. This option shows an L-shaped home located within the 50-foot buffer zone that maintains a 20-foot right-of-way at the northern part of the parcel, where the current driveway sits, and has a new means of access into the park that may be needed if a 99-year lease agreement has lapsed and not been renewed. An alternate option, also shown here, depicts a similarly situated home, but allows more frontage and parking space. This layout removes any easement or right-of-way, which would mean that if the state were to take back the easement after 99 years, the town would need to create and develop an alternative means of accessing the park. This concept sketch was created by Housing Authority Chair Rick Eifler, who also happens to be a local architect. His sketch depicts what the new affordable house may look like from the street view. The town is excited for the possibility of another affordable housing unit being made available in Concord, and looks forward to moving the design and construction process forward following town meeting's approval and the Housing Authority's acceptance of this parcel. We ask for your affirmative action on Article 27.
Thank you very much. I note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 27, and I note also that we do need a two-thirds vote on this article, because it is the transfer property. So, we'll now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number three.
Peter Seabert, 321 Hayward Mill Road.
Yes, Mr. Seabert.
The introductory remarks made it sound like this was already settled earlier, but why are we limiting ourselves to one unit? It seems like there could be room for maybe two apartments, one over the other.
Ms. Hodges?
Sure. At last year's town meeting, we discussed authorization to purchase the property, and the terms of the purchase limited us the availability of only sectioning off a half-an-acre located immediately adjacent to Commonwealth Ave for up to one unit. That was the terms of the sale from the seller.
Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 27. All those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed? That carries by well more than two-thirds, and I do so declare. Okay. Article 28. We'll hear from Ms. Bryant. And you see the motion on the screen. Do we have a second for the motion under Article 28? I see that we do. Thank you.
Beverly Bryant, 175 Conan Street, representing the Concord group Grass Fields for Safe Sports.
Proceed.
I am petitioning the town of Concord for a three-year moratorium on the installation of synthetic turf on town land. This is an extension of the moratorium put in place at the 2016 town meeting. Town land includes, but is not limited to, that of the Concord Public Schools. The moratorium does not include private land, nor the Concord Carlisle Regional High School, which is under joint jurisdiction with Carlisle. So, what is synthetic turf? Do we have a slideshow here? Okay. And we should be on three? Thank you. So, what is synthetic turf? It was originally promoted to dispose of old tires. Discarded tires are ground up into tiny pellets called crumb rubber. These pellets are not coated with anything or in any way rendered inert. Next slide. They are loosely held in place in a plastic carpet to produce playing fields. So, why the moratorium? Crumb rubber contains known carcinogens and endocrine disruptors which interfere with child development, particularly that which is under hormonal control. The chemicals found in Concord's fields include those you see here. The first four are carcinogens, including benzopyrene, which have been banned from tires in Europe because they are highly carcinogenic, but are still used in America. The last chemical listed is an endocrine disruptor that blocks the function of the male hormone androgen. Endocrine disruptors are damaging to children even in minute concentrations. There are many other chemicals in crumb rubber that have never been investigated and for which there is no data available. To have these chemicals in close contact, can we have Slide 6, please? To have these chemicals in close contact with children is a major concern. Children are more susceptible to both carcinogens and hormone disruptors, since their bodies are still developing. These chemicals can be absorbed through the skin, inhaled during gassing off of the rubber on hot days, and accidentally swallowed. Crumb rubber is also carried home on clothing, in hair, and in shoes. Also, young siblings play with the crumb rubber on the fields while their parents are watching the games. Where are we here? In response to the growing health concerns around synthetic turf nationwide, four U.S. congressmen from the Committee on Energy and Commerce and two U.S. senators wrote letters of inquiry regarding the safety of synthetic turf to the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA. They asked very specific questions about health and safety, which have yet to be answered. The Consumer Product Safety Commission, the CPSC, has not rated synthetic turf or crumb rubber as a child-safe product, and the EPA has stopped promoting crumb rubber in synthetic turf fields. The EPA, the CPSC, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, together have launched the Federal Research Action Plan to study crumb rubber and its effects on human health. This report has not yet been released, and research has been held up by delays and reductions in the appropriation of funding. Synthetic turf fields also have an environmental impact. Crumb rubber particles do not remain in the plastic carpet, but are washed out during heavy rain or snowstorms, and migrate in the runoff from the fields. This can be seen in both the Douglas White Fields and the Stadium Field. 3% to 5% of the infill is lost from each field every year. As the plastic carpet deteriorates over time, the filaments break off and also migrate from the fields. the fields. In addition, water draining through synthetic turf fields contains elevated levels of zinc, chromium, copper, and phthalates. Synthetic turf thus pollutes an area extending some distance from the fields. As a result of the 16% increase in leg and foot injuries on synthetic turf, some clubs, for example, the Baltimore Ravens, are replacing their synthetic turf fields with natural grass. Recent improvements in grass varieties have led to grasses that can stand up to hard use and drought conditions and can be managed organically without pesticides and herbicides. A University of Missouri study has shown that organically managed fields are 25% cheaper to maintain than regular grass fields and half the overall cost of synthetic turf fields. The construction of synthetic turf fields works against the sustainability principles adopted by the town in 2011 by replacing an organic ecosystem with toxic chemicals that bleed into the environment and by preventing these fields from capturing carbon from the atmosphere or from retaining water during heavy rain events. A Canadian study calculated that 1,861 trees would be required to offset the carbon footprint of one synthetic turf field for the duration of its use. In conclusion, we are asking the town to adopt another three-year moratorium to allow the ongoing research on synthetic turf to be completed, to protect our children from exposure to untested and toxic chemicals, and to better assess the environmental impact of synthetic turf fields in a time of changing climate. I urge your support on Article 28. Thank you.
Thank you. We will open the floor for questions and comments. Microphone number four.
Janet Miller, 1647 Main Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair of the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, speaking for the committee.
Excellent. Thank you.
CSAC recommends affirmative action on Article 28. Reason for this? First of all, synthetic fields violate the sustainability principles the Town of Concord adopted in 2011 to guide the town in decision-making. These principles are to reduce dependence on fossil fuels, underground metals and minerals, reduce dependence on synthetic chemicals and other manufactured substances, reduce encroachment on nature, and meet human needs fairly and efficiently. Synthetic turf violates the first three principles while grass fields can meet human needs fairly and efficiently. There's also concern about the energy requirements of synthetic fields. First, considerable energy is required for the process of converting tires into crumb rubber, which is often done after freezing the tires in liquid nitrogen. The manufacture and transport of plastic carpet also requires energy and is dependent on fossil fuels. Once installed, synthetic turf is not maintenance-free as it has to be fluffed up regularly with a machine, again consuming energy. And as Ms. Bryant pointed out, the materials in synthetic turf get washed away either as particles of crumb rubber or as chemicals that leach into the groundwater. In comparison, grass fields are a living ecosystem that contribute to carbon capture from the environment. And finally, grass can be cut with electric mowers. And as Concord moves towards all renewable electric energy, the use of fossil fuels to maintain grass fields will approach zero.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Lori Gilpisaris, 1376 Old Marlborough Road.
Ms. Gilpisaris.
Thanks, Madam Moderator. I'm speaking on behalf of Concord CAN, the Concord Climate Action Network. We strongly endorse Article 28, and we urge all Concord residents to vote yes. We maintain our position that artificial turf is bad for the environment and poses a totally unnecessary risk, health risk, for our children. I came across a report, a Gallup report, published this month that found that Americans today are placing a higher priority on environmental protection than they do on economic growth. This came as a surprise to me, and certainly in the community of Concord, which has such a historic background with very famous nature lovers, environmentalists, and authors such as Thoreau and Emerson. I expect that the number to be higher, but the actual number today is 65% support environmental protection versus 30% who support protection or economic growth. So I'd like to do a little exercise, kind of as Simon says, if you would not mind, Madam Moderator.
I actually think not.
Not, okay.
Sorry.
I thought it might give everybody an exercise, but would you mind if I demonstrate this? So I'm going to ask everybody—or not—I mean, you don't have to do this, but I'm going to reach in to my soul, and I'm going to pull out my inner environmentalist, and then I'm going to set it free. And I would ask everybody here to do the same because apparently there's a large number of us who are environmentalists, and it will feel good to set that free and protect one of Concord's main benefits, and that is our natural beauty and open space and just preserving nature.
Okay. Thank you very much. You are out of time. Microphone number four.
Bob Andrews, 32 Staffordshire Lane.
Mr. Andrews.
I'm also a member of the Concord CAN Steering Group, but I'm just speaking for myself. I'd like to, you know, express my, you know, strong belief that, you know, this—that using artificial turf is a violation of the town's, you know, sustainability principles, as has already been said, and this town should not be putting these things into the ground. I also want to invoke the precautionary principle, which, you know, says that if you don't really know, you know, that this is okay—and there are significant doubts about it's being okay with health and safety—don't do it. You know, wait until you got the evidence. Well, the evidence is not all in. You know, there are major studies being conducted in the United States by governmental agencies. There have already been, you know, studies done around the world, going back as far as 2011, that have cast great doubt upon whether it's okay for either adults or kids, you know, to be playing on fields that have this substance. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm just going to ask, if you haven't yet made up your mind how you're going to vote on this article, hold up your ballot for us. If you have not made up your mind. Okay, so that's no one. No one has not made up their mind, and it is 10:20. Thank you so much, both of you. Let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 28? Great, thank you. All those opposed? Article 28 passes by a near-unanimous vote. Thank you very much. We'll now take up Article 29. And we'll hear from Mr. Johnson.
Madam Moderator, I wanted to move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? When would you reconvene, sir? That's an incomplete motion.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I moved to adjourn and reconvene tomorrow at 7:00 P.M.
Okay. Is there a second? I see that there is. Okay. This is debatable. Anybody want to debate it? Yes?
Jay Powers, 375 Lexington Road.
Mr. Powers.
How much is this going to cost us?
So, yeah, no, I think the answer is we've actually booked most—unfortunately, all of the staff that you see sitting here, they're on salaries. So it's very sad for them, very. Now, but—and all of this equipment has been booked for us for four nights just in case, so it doesn't add much for tomorrow night. We probably—there'd be some cost for overtime for the police and so forth to be here, but it's not a substantial amount. Anybody else? Yes, microphone number one.
Jim Terry, College Road.
Yes.
How many more articles do we have to discuss?
Well, let's see. We're at Article 29, and we would have—29, one, two, three, four, five, six articles. Yes, sir.
Christian Kruger, 85 Alcott Road.
Mr. Kruger.
I would like to point out that the next article is Article 29, which is the formula business one, which is probably not going to be short. And people have to work tomorrow, so I would say that we should probably adjourn. Thank you.
Steve Ng, 12 Dalton Road.
Mr. Ng.
I think we're here to do the town's business. I think we're on a roll. Let's try to get this business done.
Microphone.
And I have to work tomorrow, too.
Microphone number four.
Tony Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I think we should stay also—I mean, those of us who stayed for one of—you know, some of the more controversial articles, and not all of us can come tomorrow night.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
David Allen, 316 Heath Brook Road.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Democracy takes a little bit. We know that at this hour, we have declining attendance. The last articles that'll be voted—whenever they get voted—will be a smaller and smaller group of people in Concord. It'll be less and less representative of the town as a whole. If we're serious about doing our job, we'll come back here tomorrow night and get this done when we have a proper house to get it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else at a microphone, it looks like we are—oh, wait, here comes somebody to a microphone. A couple of somebodies.
John Boynton, 72 Chestnut Street.
Mr. Boynton.
I just wanted to say that I know there are a number of folks who are interested in Article 29 who are not here tonight because it's gotten awfully late, so I support the idea of adjourning and coming back tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, microphone number four. Okay.
Andrea Zoll.
Ms. Zoll.
Finance Committee, speaking personally. I go with John Boynton. I would like to come back tomorrow. I would not like to come back tomorrow night, but I think it's important to start fresh.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, microphone number one.
Colleen Humphries, 400 Hayward Mill Road.
Ms. Humphries.
There is a steady trickle of people coming in right now, and history suggests that when we have done this and come back for the last night, we have hardly any people here. People aren't going to be coming very much. We should just get it over with.
Thank you. Now it looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of adjourning? This requires a majority. Thank you. All those opposed? Oh. All right. Yeah, all right. So put your ballots down. All right. All those in favor, stand up for me and hold up your ballots. Okay, thank you. Boy, it sure looks to me like people don't want to adjourn, but it's really close. I cannot tell you how much I would hate to count this vote, but help, help, help me out. What do you think? Yeah, I actually think that this is against adjourning.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, where are you? Microphone?
Matt Johnson, 21 Winthrop Street, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board.
Can we have a second for the motion, please? Thank you.
Okay. I'm supposed to have a clicker or something, right? I'll just tell you. Okay, Slide 2. So first, some background. Article 29 builds on the formula business bylaw that Town Meeting approved eight years ago in 2011. At that time, we approved a definition of a formula business and set a limit of 10 formula businesses that could be in the two Village Business Districts in West Concord. The town also introduced a special permit process for establishing, expanding, or relocating a formula business within those districts. Next slide. So tonight, the Planning Board is proposing to extend the formula business bylaw to the Concord Center Business District and use the same formula business definition and special permit process for that. We're also proposing a separate limit of 12 formula businesses for that district as opposed to the 10 that are in West Concord. So up to 10 formula businesses in West Concord, up to 12 in the Concord Center Business District. So let's go to the next slide. And what are we talking about? Well, the Concord Center Business District, as you can see here, there's a map. Also, if you picked up the Frequently Asked Questions handout outside, it has that map on it. I think everybody in this room is familiar with this part of Concord. It's informally known as the Mill Dam. You might have heard of that. And it goes along Main Street, starts at this realty company, the William Ravis Realty, at one end, and goes to the Wright Tavern at the other end of that section of Main Street. And then it also goes along Walden Street down to the 51 Walden Arts Center. However, it doesn't include the former TD Bank building. That's in its own separate limited business district. It's not enabled for retail. So before we proceed, though, since it's been a few years since we looked at this, it's probably worth reminding people about the definition of a formula business. Basically, it's any business that has two or more features that are the same across 15 or more locations, such as having the same logo, menu, or uniforms. It doesn't matter whether they're under this common ownership, just that their features are the same. Now, sameless is actually a great thing about formula businesses. You can walk into a Starbucks in Concord, or in Des Moines, Iowa, or even Sydney, Australia, and order a grande skinny soy latte, and it will taste exactly how you expected it to, or they'll make you another one. So you don't go to a particular Starbucks because it's more convenient. You go to Starbucks because it's more convenient, not because it's one that makes an especially great soy latte, right? There's no reason to choose one or the other, other than, hey, it's on my way to work. So it's no surprise, then, that we're back to six. I think we need to go back—we're ahead of ourselves here. There is a slide missing. ahead of ourselves here. There is a slide missing. Anyway, it's no surprise, then, that most commercial districts in America vie to provide the most convenient access to formula businesses. But Concord Center is more than that. It's a destination on its own, being both a historic village center and the site of many of Concord's historic resources. So many, in fact, cultural resources, that Concord Center was designated one of the first Massachusetts cultural districts. Shoppers go to Concord Center as well to find products and experiences they can't get anywhere else, to taste a cloth-bound cheddar at the cheese shop, to listen to the working man's band at Main Street's Cafe, or have Scotty tearfully replace a cracked pane of glass in an old storm window at Vanderhoof's. Even if a formula business conforms to the Historic District Commission's requirements so it looks more compatible with the town, its other attributes don't contribute to what makes Concord Center so special. So, that brings us to the purpose of this bylaw. While formula businesses have their merits, their sameness also dilutes the unique characteristics of a place like Concord Center. Establishing a limit on formula businesses helps preserve the character, diversity, variety, and scale of the district, which attracts residents and visitors to the town. Concord Center is not a museum. Now, you can go to that slide. I don't know what happened to all the rest of the slides in this presentation. It's not a museum like Old Sturbridge Village, right? It's a working, commercial center, and it's had some formula businesses practically since they've ever existed. Some might remember Woolworths, for example. So, this bylaw amendment doesn't seek to ban formula businesses. We're not trying to vilify them, but to really—to establish a limit. And the idea is to maintain that character, the balance of formula businesses and more unique businesses within that district. So, here's a list of the ten formula businesses that are here today, and they include banks, real estate firms, clothing shops, and a cafe. This number's been really relatively stable over the years, but we set a limit of about twelve, which is above the current number of ten, to provide some flexibility, but to still manage the impact that the preponderance of these businesses could have on Concord Center's unique character if they ever grew over time. So, now, let's hope we've got the next slide. That's—oh, the purpose of the bylaw. It's out of order. Next. So, this—and that's what was special about Concord Center. Okay, next. So, this bylaw is an outgrowth of comprehensive, long-range plan, which included the expansion of this formula business bylaw as one of its recommended actions. So, we're following up on that and also other town studies over the years that have suggested a formula business bylaw for our vigil—village centers. So, next. Someone has the wrong version of this presentation. So, first of all, some have raised concerns about the health of the business district, and I actually had data from CoStar, a, a organization that actually captures all the data and shows that the vacancy rate within Concord Center is very low, about three percent, as well as both rents and market prices for businesses have increased dramatically over the—since the economic crisis. Also, I just wanted to note that the motion—it varies from the warrant article, simply because we wanted to ensure there was no ambiguity in the reference to the districts themselves. And we've replaced the entirety of Section 3.3 with this new language, so that there's just a simpler wording of the bylaw to reflect all the districts that we're protecting in West Concord. So, in conclusion, the Planning Board unanimously recommends affirmative action on Article 29.
Thank you.
Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road, a member of the Select Board, speaking for the board.
Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article's intent is to preserve the character of the downtown area in Concord. The Select Board is firmly in support of this intent, and each time the citizens of the town are surveyed, they too indicate the town character is important. Nevertheless, the Select Board has voted four to one for no action on this warrant article. I would like to explain why. Concord is a very special place in the downtown area, speaks to the simple charm of a New England town. While constituting just a few blocks, as was explained, it is nevertheless quite diverse. The stores are well-kept and modest in their outward appearance. Most are local businesses, but there are a number of what we would call formula businesses. We value them all. Collectively, they provide choice and diversity through the products and services they provide to us and to visitors to the town. Maintaining this character will not be easy. The internet, massive online retailers, people's preferences, and convenience have dramatically altered the retail scene, and these changes will continue to put pressure on all communities, especially those smaller cities and towns. The most effective way to maintain the coun—town carrier—town's character is to manage it, as we've seen by this proposed article. The key to maintaining a vibrant and diverse town center that maintains the character we all value is not preventing certain businesses from coming to town. Rather, it is to work to increase the number of visitors who come to town, to create more demand for products and services our business provide and their customers want. Concord has a national historical park, a museum, Sleepy Hollow, Walden Pond, and an enviable history. What percentages of those visitors to those sites come to the downtown to shop or to have a meal? A small percentage, I believe. We must also work with property owners to seek out businesses that might come to town. Importantly, we must continue to rely on the Historic Districts Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Natural Resources Commission, along with town departments, to provide the oversight and requirements on businesses to appreciate and to adhere to the standards that protect the town's character. Finally, we need to support our downtown, depot, and West Concord businesses. Concord's downtown has seen significant change over the last decade. Dozens of businesses have come and gone, and that change will continue. Businesses will invariably come and go as business practices change, with economic forces, social trends, and competition that will continue to reshape the retail environment. The more effective way to preserve the character of our downtown is to support Concord businesses, to encourage businesses to come to town, to more effectively engage the over one million tourists that come to town each year, and to insist that those businesses that want to come to town become part of the town and not adversely impact the town's character. The Select Board encourages no action on Article 29.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. We will now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number three.
Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
I think I—I've—I haven't heard once someone say how many years they've lived in Concord, and I won't—don't want to keep that going, but I've been here a number of years. And one of the reasons that my wife and I chose to move here was the vibrancy and uniqueness of the town of Concord, especially the Mill Dam area. And the—while the—all the businesses that I saw listed as, as formula businesses there, those are—many of those businesses I, I, you know, I shop at or were used, and I, I think they're wonderful. But the—it is true, despite what I just heard, that many people come to Concord to shop, and they don't go to Lexington to shop. Lexington is full of, of those formula stores, and I never go there because it's, it's so, you know, it's so bland and same. And, you know, Carlisle has almost no businesses, and, you know, Wayland is all scattered. But you can go to Concord Center, and you see a, you know, a wide variety of businesses that you want to go in. There are like three or four antique stores, four or five sho—clothing stores, and it's wonderful. And the only way we can maintain that is to do what the Planning Board recommends, and this was actually one of the highest priority recommendations in the town plan. I can't cite chapter and verse, but it, it's—it was already decided by town committees that maintaining the character of, of the downtown area is, is a high priority for the town. And to defeat this simply says that we had a bad planning process earlier, which couldn't be true. So, I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Arthur Walker, 13 Chestnut Street, Concord.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I speak as a longtime employee at the—and staff member at the Concord Visitor Center, 58 Main Street, in the heart of what we're talking about. And I think this is my eighteenth or nineteenth year there. And we are now managed by the Town Recreation Department, too. We had a long time under the Chamber of Commerce, but as a tour guide and staff member at the Visitor Center, I see hundreds of tourists all the time. Many of the people who come from all over the planet—to the National Park, to Orchard House, to Walden Pond—do come to Concord Center, either to the Visitor Center to get directions, or they're referred from the park or Walden Pond to come to Concord Center. They do go to the businesses. They do eat in the restaurants. They're very charmed with the, um, lack of, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or, or, or what we're talking about, the, these—I forgot the term, but, but these formula businesses. And it seems to me like this isn't discouraging or kicking out formal businesses. It, it sounds like they had—maybe the guidelines were twelve, and there are already ten. I love Middlesex Bank, and that's listed as one of them. I, I wouldn't think of Concord Center as Concord Center without Middlesex Bank, and, and there are several others like that. So, I don't think this is anti—completely anti-formal, um, formula businesses. It's just a protective gesture to keep Concord as unique as it was. This is one of the most unique town centers in the world, and I hear that from people who come from every state in the Union and, and from all over the globe.
Thank you very much. You are out of time, and thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Microphone number two.
My name's Greg Higgins, 51 Cottage Lane.
Mr. Higgins.
Madam Moderator. I rise as President of the Concord Business Partnership. I reluctantly must address the decision of the Planning Board to impose further restrictions in this targeted fashion on our business community in the name of maintaining the character of the town centers. And I understand the anxiety of shop owners and landlords have facing the changing times in retail and commercial real estate in general. The internet giants are a force to be reckoned with, and no friend of the smaller guy trying to make ends meet, whether retailer or landlord. I believe, however, Article 29 is based on fear of change and protectionism. We need to approach our business districts holistically with respect for the unique ecosystems they represent. It is said that when, when one finds a place that they love, the wind never blows so cold. I have felt that way over sixty years since my father opened his office on the Friends Building over what was then Snow's Pharmacy. Over the past sixty years, I have watched the Mill Dam morph its way through years, through the years, with more than fifty stores of all sizes changing tendency. I remember Rose Hawthorne School, the courthouse on the Monument Square, the fire station next to the post office. I remember getting a lemon Coke at—from Marty Powers at Snow's Pharmacy on the corner and devouring thickest—the thickest sandwiches at Anderson's Market. All gone or moved. Change has been a constant on the Mill Dam and is part of our character. As a matter of fact, over the years, we have lost many large formula businesses in the Mill Dam. Woolworths, AMP, Ford Dealership, Bank North, Boston Gas, Brigham's Ice Cream, many, many more. We have always managed our town centers well, administered our laws and regulations equally among all retailers. The fact that we like the nature of our centers is no accident, but a product of hard work of town staff and many volunteer boards working tirelessly and even-handedly. Protectionism is not good for the nation, and protectionism is—protectionism is not needed for Concord, nor good for Concord, nor its commercial sectors.
You're just about out of time.
Well, can I give—it just—would you give me an extra thirty seconds, please? Our town character encompasses change, and we have done well with it for three hundred and fifty years. Let's combine our talents and find a way to deal with formula businesses to the benefit of the whole community in the harmony of the rest of the commercial sector.
You are going to have to stop, Mr. Higgins, and I believe you have a handout, right? And it's out there, and everyone can read it.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Microphone number three.
I agree with everything this gentleman said.
You need to identify yourself.
Excuse—oh, Andrea Zoll, a member of the Finance Committee.
And you have an address in Concord?
Twenty—Willow Street, 25 Willow Street.
Excellent, thank you.
I am speaking personally and as a retail business owner in Concord. When we moved to Concord forty-seven years ago, there was a horse and plow that plowed the sidewalks around the center and down Thoreau Street. Anderson Market was there. It was a very charming, charming town. Raised my children here. We went through the school system. Thirty-four years ago, I opened a business on Thoreau Street. I'm still there. I have vacancies on either side of me for the past three years. The center of town has seen many vacancies. Independent businesses coming and going. I think that it has become a center that is difficult for some residents, many residents of Concord, to actually shop in. I do not get my business from tourists. I love to see tourists in town. Have them come to the center. It is still charming. It is very difficult because of many restrictions that are put on businesses coming into town. It's very difficult to open a business. That's fine. Those, those are in place. I think that the, the wrong problem is being addressed. We need to support local businesses, whoever they are, to keep the vacancies down and the traffic moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Jimmy Twofeathers, 303 Commonwealth Ave.
Mr. Twofeathers.
Thank you, Miss Madam Moderator. I'm speaking for myself, but also as a long-term resident and someone who spent five years on the West Concord Task Force, two years on the Advisory Committee after that, and that's when we put in the first formula business bylaw in West Concord. There are a lot of naysayers. There are a lot of people who are feared about—afraid about this. There are a lot of people who think it's restrictive. Well, go to Bill Ricker Center if you want to see something ridiculous. There's no restrictions there. There's a strip mall right off the Town Center Common. When that happens, it doesn't go back, doesn't come back. I drive around New England a lot, and what I've noticed over the last several years is all the places look the same. It gets harder and harder to find a unique, beautiful, little town center. This is one of them, and once it's gone, it doesn't come back. I applaud the Planning Board and the people who have the courage to stand up and say, you know, we want to balance here. We love our formula businesses, but there are many of them, and when you go to other centers, that's all you see. It's hard to find a, a good diner or a little place to eat when you're out of town. You can use an app and look for places, but it's not the same, and it doesn't look the same. I urge you to vote yes on this article. Also, by the way, we had an economic downturn the last time when we did this. We lost one business in West Concord Center because the owner passed away, and everything's fine. So, we have proof and history that it works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Yes, Mrs. Moderator, Carol Finnegan Wilson, 419 Main Street.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I speak as an individual, but I'm also on the Concord Business Partnership Board. I own a business here in town, and I also am a landlord. But my comments today really relate to the fact that Article 29 presents as fact that limiting limiting the number of formula businesses in our town center will, quote, "avoid a proliferation of businesses that are homogeneous and visually obtrusive." It goes on to say that limiting the number of formula businesses will safeguard Concord's historical relevance and will ensure that Concord residents and tourists continue to have unique dining, retail, and service experiences in our village center. That's quite a promise. Some of the formula businesses that we want to keep out are similar to the stores, such as Jay McLaughlin with 40 locations and Sarah Campbell with 25. And according to the formula bylaw definition, we have 10 or 11 such businesses now, with a cap of 12. That's it. No one else would be welcome here. I don't know about you, but I like these shops, and I should not be afraid of offering options, variety, and healthy competition. Together with the many business owners, longtime Concordians, and local shoppers, I am very concerned with the regulating of businesses and limiting property owners' rights to lease their space in Concord Center. This article is about who we don't want in our town and does not offer any opportunity for the town to work with potential new businesses and guide them through the process and measures in place to meet our historic preservation goals and our community needs. We can do better than this. Over the years, Concord has approved a number of bylaws and the direct businesses to conform and preserve the historical nature of our downtown areas, including signage, parking, lighting, hours of operation.
I think you're out of time.
I'm out of time?
Yeah. Well, okay, wait.
That's not my time. That was his time.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. And in many cases, they have to pay for these compliances. The Concord Business Partnership handout highlights the boards, departments, and committees that have to review every new business. And they must approve them before they can be, in addition to these other requirements, before they can be approved. It's quite a process, as it is, with plenty of safeguards, and the Historic District Commission must also approve their presence in our historic areas. Everyone wants to see our downtown full of healthy, vital, and sustainable businesses that support our community and our visitors.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, now you really are out of time.
Okay. No, I don't believe I am. Don't I have two minutes?
Yeah. But, all right.
If I could just make one point, this is no one else's method in this yet. I think there's a better way to preserve our business district. In the 2005 Comprehensive Long Range Committee, it was recommended that we hire an Economic Sustainability Director.
Okay.
And it has been recommended again in the 2018 Long Range Plan.
Okay.
The town manager has included it in two of his budgets, and both of them have not been funded.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a positive way to make change and ensure that we have a viable downtown.
Thank you. So I'll tell you what. What I'm going to start doing now is turning off microphones when we hit two minutes. So, no, 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 no. And I'm sorry to do that to people, but at this hour, I just think we have to respect the time limits. Microphone number three.
This is Anne Rothstein, 526 Cambridge Turnpike.
Yes, Ms. Rothstein.
I'm also a business owner on Thoreau Street. And I came initially to the warrant and thought I would vote against, I would vote, I don't even know, in favor of limiting the formula businesses. And I thought about that for a few weeks. And I realized that the worst thing that will happen is what's been going on recently downtown, what's happening next to Andrea on Thoreau Street is vacancy. And so I urge everyone to think about how you do your business, where you do your business, and that these formula businesses like Sarah Campbell and Jay McLaughlin aren't the evil empires that some people sort of have them out in their heads to be. My other point, really, which is in my time, is that I would urge us as a community to think about retail space and what we want to have there. And as we think about affordable housing, think about affordable retail space, because that's the way that we can preserve small businesses and startups like myself, where I had a landlord who took a chance on me with an idea. And that's what we really need to do as a community. And instead of banning people, figure out how to build from within.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Rob Andrews, 32 Staffordshire Lane. I'm a member of the steering group of Concord Can, and I'm speaking for Concord Can. Concord Can strongly supports Article 29, which the Planning Board has unanimously recommended to the town. The article was included after a very thorough study in the town's Long Range Plan, which was developed within a sustainability framework, looking at every item in terms of whether it fitted with local and nationwide sustainability principles. We have a good Planning Board and a good long-range planning group, and we should honor them. Part of Concord Can's mission is to advocate for local sustainability. Sustainability is not just about energy. It's about building and retaining a community that will stand strong for future generations and withstand the serious challenges posed by advancing climate change. The town's fourth sustainability principle states that human needs should be met in a fair and equitable manner. Business establishments and town centers are there to meet our needs, our needs for consumer goods. We enjoy our business centers as they stand because they offer a variety of goods and are not unfairly dominated by formula businesses. The current mix gives us our unique town character. We feel that businesspeople who live here tend to care more about meeting our genuine local needs and are often more creative in doing so. They keep money in the local economy. They are more likely to supply locally-made goods. And in a crisis, they don't go away. So Article 29 is really insurance against becoming a community of clones. It will not do away with formula business, but puts a cap on it. It's consistent with preserving town character. Keep Concord vibrant and a sustainable community by voting for Article 29. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Microphone number three.
Christian Kruger, 85 Alcott Road.
Mr. Kruger.
I have to admit, my original thoughts about this article were that, you know, it would be a bad idea to get rid of formula businesses, as someone who has patronized Cafe Nero and really enjoyed the experience. But it feels to me that one of the major drivers of the empty spaces that have been showing up in our town center is the desire of the holders of those property to find the best deal for them. That makes perfect sense. When you're dealing with formula businesses, you are dealing with an operator that can generally put forward a lot more capital than a small business that may or may not end up providing the sort of money consistently and may not end up being a good investment versus, you know, a nice cafe that's well-established and has a record of other businesses very much like it. Which means that we, as a town, need to take steps in order to ensure that as these businesses come and go, that we can replace them with other businesses of similar character, preferably owned and operated by people who live within the town themselves. And that means making sure that those businesses have a place to be. The economically sensible thing seems to me to be to limit the formula businesses so that way these small businesses that are independently owned have a place to go that is viable. And so that way, they don't end up having to compete against tiny giants that are punching way above their weight class. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
George Corret, 148 Peter Spring Road.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am an employee of a large online retailer. Therefore, it is my job to help crush formulaic local businesses. And this article is a lot like the Maginot Line. You know, it's generals fighting the previous war. And let me tell you, you have no idea what's going to happen in the next five years. But one thing for sure, it's only very highly customized retail businesses with custom services that will survive against, and I won't mention who I work for. But, and they're used to, well, so this, actually, this, I'm going to, you have to vote against this article if you want to preserve the character of the town. Because it's arbitrary and capricious in the way it defines formula businesses. I tell you, you know, we have a great hardware store, but it's a lot like hundreds of other hardware stores. We have a great bakery, but there's three of them kind of like it in Lexington. So that logo is not necessarily, you know, it's more than just the logo. Even if it does have the logo, it has to be highly customized for that area. So I don't think this is going to help preserve the nature of the town.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Peter Lee, 140 Walden Street.
Mr. Lee.
So I support this article very much. I commend the Planning Committee for putting this together, and I think it's a reasonable compromise. I have worked for large corporations in the past. I have nothing against them. They're wonderful. They're very efficient. They have the ability to have cheaper capital. They have more resources. They could deliver the same service as a small company much cheaper, and they will outcompete you. So I think if we want this town to have its historical character, and that is why I moved here 17 years ago, if we want that, if that's important to us, we have to consider this as a reasonable compromise. So I support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Carrie Kleiman, 57 Central Street. Chairman of the Planning Board, but I'm speaking for myself tonight and actually reflecting on my role as the former co-chair of the Long Range Plan Committee. As I reflect on the public hearing processes that we had for the Long Range Planning Process, Long Range Plan Committee, the formula business bylaw was a topic of great interest and importance to many citizens. The committee heard comments for and against a formula business bylaw, but the large majority of comments supported a formula business bylaw in Concord Center of the type proposed in Article 29 as a method to preserve the existing character, scale, variety, and diversity of the business district. I also want to support the comments that Ms. Wilson and others have made tonight about the importance of economic development. Formula business bylaw is meant to be integrated with other existing regulations, like zoning permits and the Historic District Commission approvals, as well as new measures like coordinated marketing and economic development programs. Yes, there's more work to be done with other groups and institutions. This change to the town's zoning bylaw is only one component of coordinated action that's needed to proactively build and support economic vitality in the town centers that will preserve the existing unique characteristics and qualities of Concord. So I'm going to support Article 29.
Thank you. You turn that a little. Microphone number three. Perfect. Thank you.
There you go. Do my best for you. Nope, it's not going to help.
That's good.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, member of the Finance Committee, but just speaking for myself. I really just have a question here.
Mr. Banfield.
When the formula business bylaw was enacted for West Concord, there were two areas of West Concord that were protected. There are two areas on this side of the tracks, and the depot is not included. I just want to know what the thinking was and why the depot is not part of the program.
Mr. Johnson.
I think at approximately the same time as the original formula business bylaw was passed, we created several business districts within town. And they were around these, in fact, four village centers that we have within Concord. If you're not familiar with them, it's the Nine Acre Corner, the Thoreau Depot, the Concord Center, and then West Concord Village. So those, so the Thoreau Depot area is actually considered a distinct business district. And I should just mention that the Planning Board is, right now, studying about a major mixed-use intensification of development around that transportation center of the Thoreau Depot area. But that's a matter for next year. I didn't know if this is also a time to address a couple of the other points that were brought up, or perhaps wait.
You can have just a minute. Go ahead.
Okay. So one of the points that was brought up was really about the exclusion of any individual business. And I just wanted to note that, you know, even a Starbucks could locate within Concord Center under this bylaw. They would just need to accommodate their business as provided in the bylaw. They can adapt their business activities in consultation with the building inspector so that they're no longer considered a formula business. So for example, if they offered a Minute Man latte instead of a Skinny Soy latte, that would take care of one of the attributes of the standardized menu. So in other words, give a reason to go to that particular Starbucks as opposed to just any old Starbucks. So that's the idea, create incentives for businesses to be unique or contribute to the uniqueness of Concord. So it's not about who owns the business, whether they have 500, 1,000 locations, but whether that location is contributing to Concord's character.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Microphone number two.
Hello, John Boynton, 72 Chestnut Street.
Mr. Boynton.
I want to clarify that the Long Range Plan on which I served did not prescribe a formula business bylaw. The relevant section urged the town to, quote, "strengthen the sustainability of local businesses in commercial districts." This bylaw will not contribute to that goal. Is Concord Center a gem? Yes. How did that happen? Credit goes to the wonderful merchants, indies and chains both, and their landlords, of which I am one. We maintain the historic facades. We pay to keep our buildings up to code. We sign what we hope will be long-term leases with tenants who will contribute to a vibrant retail mix. Many of them have been with us for decades. One of our latest arrivals, Cafe Nero, a formula business with nearly 900 locations, is already a local favorite. In other words, the market has served Concord Center well. It has served West Concord well, too. In 2008, the Planning Division produced an inspiring master plan for the village. The town had no resources to invest, but 11 years later, much of that vision has become reality. We have renovated retail blocks and numerous new restaurants. The Bradford Mill is a thriving cluster of innovative, locally-owned businesses. Brookside Square has welcomed hundreds of residents. West Concord is experiencing a 21st century renaissance, and the formula business bylaw that was enacted for West Concord deserves none of the credit. Increased foot traffic from residents and office workers are fueling the goodness. Concord Center property owners have the most at stake, and this bylaw will tie their hands. A retail district is a complex ecosystem, and sustaining a diverse retail environment is more art than science. It needs to be flexible to respond to the future change. The current system works. It works so well, in fact, that the Planning Board decided we needed to do something different. I disagree. This additional regulation will not be good for Concord Center in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. Microphone number one.
Mark Martinez, 66 Alfred Circle.
Mr. Martinez.
If I have a question, does that even into my time? If I ask a question?
Of course it does.
Okay. And I'll ask a question at the end, then. So, a couple of things. Personally, I think it's just way too premature to act on this. And the reason why I think that is that a lot of business owners are not represented here tonight, and a lot of them don't live in this town. A lot of retailers aren't able to get here and to speak to you. But like past speakers have spoken about, retailers are struggling. That's reality. Storefronts are vacant. People, small retailers are suffering. Most towns are looking to grow and sustain those local small businesses. It's not a time to start imposing additional regulation on those businesses. There are a lot of formula businesses that drive traffic. We've heard about that. Also, there are a lot of formula businesses that are franchisees. They are small business owners who are signing leases personally, signing loan documents personally, and are entrepreneurs. They are being penalized because they're operating under a corporate umbrella. Proponents of this article state that the select board is out of touch, and they are out of touch with the town documents and past select boards. I think it's fair to give, to honor the work they have done and to give them our benefit of doubt as to why they voted against this. Let's do some simple math. When we started on Article, I think it was 16, we had roughly 300 people here, 300 voters. There are roughly less than, probably 250 now. Two-thirds of that, over 13,000 voters, is 1.5%. So just so we're clear, two-thirds of us tonight are basically legislating for the town.
Okay. You're out of time.
So please, you know, honor the select boards. No action.
Microphone number five.
Hi. I'm Doris Odet from 34 Everett Street.
Ms. Odet.
I basically have a comment. I'm new to Concord, five and a half years. Over several decades, I grew up and was a young adult in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Harvard was a favorite. Harvard was a favorite haunt of mine, and Harvard Square, I'm sorry, and I watched it transform from local businesses that felt homey to all these big box stores that didn't seem they had anything to do with Harvard Square, except they were there to make money and pull money out of the community and whatever. Stop going to Harvard Square. Here I am in Concord, and it's just a wonderful place, the little stores and the people, very human-scaled. People seem to have a real connection and caring for the place, responsibility for it. I don't know that this article will do what people intend. On TV, on PBS, I watched this show called Startup, and it's about a show, this guy goes around the country looking at all these entrepreneurs and how they started their small businesses. By definition, an entrepreneur like that isn't a big, big-box store or has like 100 different places all around the country. They tend to be small and put a lot of their energy into growing their small businesses. And for a place like Concord, you'd think, all these vacant spaces, you'd find a way to encourage entrepreneurs to come in and not the big-box stores. To maintain, it would really increase the character of an already wonderfully-charactered town. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Bosdat, 151 Hubbard Street.
Yes, sir.
Member of the Planning Board, but speaking for myself. The first thing I wanted to do was address some of the comments that Mr. Lawson had made on part of this Select Board. He made a comment that only a small percentage is coming for shopping and to eat, et cetera. And I wanted to say that when my, well, then-girlfriend, now-wife, first came to Concord, we had an early date at the Old North Bridge, and, you know, Concord has many things that we came here to do, North Bridge, Walden Pond, et cetera, but what kept us coming back, what made us decide to move here and raise our family here, was the community and the town centers, in that they were different from the town centers that I had grown up with out of state that were, for the most part, dead. And it wasn't like other town centers in other parts of New England that have kind of given up and have been overtaken by, you know, Formula Businesses. And, you know, I believe that this article strikes a balance between the Formula Businesses and the local businesses. It gives an opportunity for both to survive side by side, each having a chance to make it out. And I think someone said we needed to have more holistic approach, but I think that is what this is. We are building on existing structures that the town has put in place. We've identified different ways of continuing to have the town be the way that we would like it to be, you know, through the Long Range Plan. And maintaining affordable retail space was another thing. I mean, how else are we going to do that if it's all Formula Businesses? They're going to drive up the rates for all of the places. And, what was I going to say here? Oh, someone else mentioned that, you know, it's working so well that it hasn't been necessary in West Concord, and I think that's, that's been great, but...
And you're out of time.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to say, it's a break.
Thank you. I'm going to pass you because you spoke once already. Microphone number two.
Henry Dane, 58 Everett Street.
Mr. Dane.
Few of you probably remember when Concord Center was dominated by Woolworths, a First National, an AMP, a Ford dealership. Those were the good old days that you want to hearken back to. Restricting businesses is not going to bring back the mom and pop. The competition for the mom and pop store is not the big retailers who are challenged by the same economic factors that the small retailers are, which are high real estate values, those are the same high real estate values that all of us benefit from in our own homes, and the internet, which has destroyed the malls. So this bylaw, which hasn't really done anything in West Concord, which has thrived, as Mr. Boynton said, for other reasons, is not going to accomplish what is hoped for it. In addition, a nearly identical bylaw in the town of Wellfleet was declared illegal and unenforceable by the land court in 2015 because the restrictions did not apply to non-Formula Businesses doing precisely the same things in precisely the same locations in precisely the same way. The court saw through the Formula Business concept as a thinly disguised surrogate for a prohibited restriction on ownership of the excluded businesses. If you want to increase, if you want to increase the proportion of local, locally-owned businesses, this is not going to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Dane.
And because of the legality of it is going to lead to getting the town...
Thank you. You are out of time, Mr. Dane. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will ask Town Council to come and just respond to the legal point that was just raised for the meeting about the question of whether there is an appropriate challenge to be made to the statute.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a few quick points. One, while there certainly could be a challenge in that land court decision, Mr. Dane correctly described it, the difference, there are differences between the Wellfleet bylaw and the Concord bylaw. The key one Mr. Johnson brought up earlier is that you can design your way out of being a Formula Business under the Concord bylaw. That was a key feature missing in Wellfleet. The other key point is that decision came after a trial on the evidence, and the evidentiary record supported the court's decision. In several Attorney General's opinions since then, bylaw, Formula Business bylaws have been approved notwithstanding the Wellfleet decision. The last point I'd say is that the addition here of these districts would only apply the standard that's already in West Concord to the center. So to the extent that the bylaw was susceptible to challenge before, it doesn't change it, it just adds locations.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Cynthia Rainey, 80 Hunters Ridge Road. I call the question.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. We've been at this just about an hour, so it's hard to say it's not reasonable. This is non-debatable, requires a 2/3 vote. All those in favor of calling the question? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Okay. That carries, and we'll now proceed to a vote. This is a zoning bylaw. It requires a 2/3 vote. All those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion clearly carries by 2/3, and I do so declare.
Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street, Chair of the Concord Planning Board, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiman. Would those of you who are departing, please do so quietly. The rest of us are still working. Thank you very much. Can we have a second for the motion that's on the screen, please? Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Article 30 asks the town to make a small change in the map that defines our current personal wireless communications facilities overlay district. Slide two. This warrant article will expand a portion of the current existing wireless overlay district in the area of the Middlesex School at 1400 Lowell Road. The area in pink on this map shows the existing district, and the area in brown is the proposed area of expansion. What's the purpose of a wireless overlay district? It defines the area of town within which wireless facilities may be regulated in various ways. It should be thought of less as a specific surgically-defined area where wireless facilities should be cited. Rather, it serves more as a way to distinguish the broad areas of town where the board will consider applications for further review, scrutiny, regulation consistent with goals such as visual, aesthetic, scenic, historic, environmental, and natural protection. From that perspective, any individual application still needs to be scrutinized to understand where, within the overlay district. Citing may or may not be appropriate, for example, some distance from homes or historic structures, and not in wetlands or sensitive habitats. This is consistent with the general purpose of zoning, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, independent of ownership, patterns, or deed restrictions. Slide three. Last year, at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, the Planning Board recommended no action on a very similar citizen petition to expand the district at this same location. We urged no action at that time because the usual comprehensive process for vetting bylaw amendments had not been undertaken by the board. Since that time, the Planning Board has reviewed the expansion of the district at three public meetings, where we had an opportunity to take into consideration the intent of current bylaw provisions and the apparent physical limitations in the area. Next slide. After careful review, the Planning Board feels that expansion of the district in this area may enable consideration of additional options for providing wireless service to the town. This map shows the 1,000-foot buffer from an existing childcare facility, the 1,000-foot buffer from single-family dwellings on adjacent properties, shows the locations of vernal pools, and approximate locations of wetlands. As the map shows, expansion of the district... Oh, hello.
Seriously?
Well, you can see the map better, anyway. Let me check my glasses here. As the map shows, expansion of the district in this area indicated would provide additional citing options that would not require waivers related to these facilities, structures, or locations. Next slide, last slide. For that reason, the Planning Board urges affirmative action on Article 30.
Okay. Well, if you're coming to, I see there are people using their flashlights. Oh, good. Okay. Come to the microphone carefully. Okay. Microphone number two.
Matthew Crozier, 108 Barrett Mill Road.
Mr. Crozier.
I'm also the Chief Operating Officer of Middlesex School, and I wanted to speak to Town Meeting this evening to let them know that I think it's important that Town Meeting knows that Middlesex School did not seek and does not support Article 30 and the expansion of the wireless overlay district to this Esterbrook Woods area. You may recall, as Mr. Kleiman pointed out from last year, that a similar warrant brought by citizen's petition was defeated at Town Meeting. This warrant comes with the support of the Concord Planning Board, but it is important to note that it did not include input from the principal landowner affected, namely Middlesex School, did not include input from other important landowners in Esterbrook Woods who would be affected, including Harvard University, who's one of the landowners on that map, is not part of a systematic review of the wireless overlay district in the town of Concord, and did not include input from Town Council or special Town Councils, the case may be, regarding the active litigation brought by the Barkus Farm Condominium Trust against ITW, Middlesex School, or the town of Concord. So for that reason, we respectfully request a no vote on Article 30.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Yes, this is Sheldon Hines. Again, it's from 74 The Valley Road. My wife is unable to be here. She and I wrote this letter together. I want to read. Thank, I'm here to speak in favor of Article 30. In a perfect world, we would not be in favor of expanding a wireless overlay district, but this is not a perfect world, and we have to deal with the current situation. Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 preempted communities from denying wireless facilities outright, but left placement, construction, et cetera, of these towers and antennas to municipalities like ours. In response, communities such as ours constructed bylaws. Here in Concord, members of a group that we belong to, Concord Citizens for Responsible Tower Citing, worked with the Planning Board and the Town Planner, at that time Marsha Rasmussen, to write Concord's wireless bylaw, which had as its core language protecting the well-being of people, not the well-being of woods. Now, 21 years later, we have a situation where Middlesex School wants to relocate wireless antennas from their smokestack smack into the midst of a neighborhood, continuing to make money from the wireless carriers at the expense of their neighbors. We know that the, some of their houses on Barkus Road will have towers visible from their kitchen windows, which is not what was intended when the bylaw was passed and The neighbors will pay the price by losing their view sheds, that is to say, they have towers visible outside their kitchen windows, they'll lose value in their homes, and they'll lose some of their well-being. Middlesex School's proposed location violates the more important aspects of the bylaw, namely setbacks. I personally wrote much of the bylaw that has setbacks.
Mr. Hines, you are out of time. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's see. Microphone number three again.
Christian Kruger, 85 Alcott Road.
Mr. Kruger.
I and my fellow wireless overlay district experts here are probably a little confused, at least I am, given the hour, about what the pro-con is that we're waiting here, who the affected parties might be. Obviously, there's a need for a lot more wireless coverage in Concord to improve the strength of signals in various areas, and I was wondering if someone could add some clarity to what exactly we're choosing between here, because it sounds as if there's been a counterproposal and a proposal, and people who feel they're going to be affected negatively.
Let's get an answer to your question.
Thank you.
Not really choosing between any parties. We're undertaking a review of the wireless overlay district in response to a citizen petition, which we did not feel had been adequately vetted. So we felt it incumbent upon the committee to undertake the due diligence that normally accompanies a zoning bylaw change. So this is just a question of whether to change the bylaw or not to change the bylaw. If we accept the expansion, then we would change the bylaw to use that map instead of a prior map that doesn't include the expanded region.
And this just opens up potential available places to put things?
So in the future, if new wireless communications facilities were suggested, there would be additional opportunities to cite it without requiring nearly as many waivers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Alicia Boyajin, 33 Stowe Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to point out that there are some considerable concerns about health impacts from cell towers. So I appreciate the efforts of the Planning Board to expand the district and offer sites that would provide adequate buffers from homes and school buildings. I think it's important to point out that, at the moment, the wireless industry remains basically unregulated. What does exist is a mountain of policy and legislation that protects the economic interest of the wireless industry, but really, the only thing we have to protect the interest of the residents are our local zoning bylaws. So I am grateful for the Planning Board to take the time to reexamine and expand this district. I don't personally love the idea of ever encroaching on woodlands or natural habitats, but unless everyone tosses out their cell phones, these facilities need to reside somewhere, and I would prioritize protecting the health and well-being of people every single time. So I support Article 30.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready to proceed to a vote on Article 30. Once again, this is a zoning bylaw, so it does require a 2/3 vote for passage. All those in favor of Article 30? Thank you very much. All those opposed? That passes by 2/3, and I do so declare. We have addressed Articles 32, 33, and 34 on the consent calendar, and will therefore proceed to Article 35, and we'll hear from Ms. Ferguson. The motion is on the screen on amending the Fairs and Bazaars bylaw, and can we have a second, please? I see that we do. Thank you.
Kristen Ferguson, 218 Thoreau...
Kristen Ferguson, 218 Thoreau Street.
Ms. Ferguson.
I'm a member of the Planning Board, presenting on behalf of the Planning Board. This is about fairs and bazaars, and I think I can make this a lot faster than the last two. So if you could do the next slide. Section 5.4.5 requires a municipal, educational, or religious organization, or private lodge or club, to get a special permit for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers, dances, or similar events, if they're conducted outside or longer than three days, if they last longer than three days. So, for example, the town holds several outdoor events that you might have attended, picnic in the park, the block party on Stowe Street, Jazz Fest, the drop-off swap-off would also count as one of these events, as well as Discover West Concord Day. These events are coordinated through various town departments, the Select Board, town manager, and the police chief. There's no real beneficial purpose for the town to get a special permit. Therefore, the proposed amendment deletes the word "municipal" and adds the following statement: "Any such event held by the town of Concord in or on any building or premises owned or operated by the town of Concord shall not be subject to the restrictions of this section or the requirement to obtain a special permit hereunder." And that's about it. The Planning Board recommends affirmative action on this article.
I did. Thank you. Okay. So some of you may wonder why this didn't end up on the consent calendar, and it's because we had a little confusion over it at the hearings, and it seemed like it needed a fuller discussion. That's the only reason this one wasn't on the consent calendar. We'll open the floor to questions and comments. Are you approaching a microphone, sir?
I am, Madam Moderator. I just have a question, which is, how much does it cost in labor hours for the town person organizing an event to obtain this permit? And has there any...ever been a case where the permit was denied?
Madam Moderator. Elizabeth Hughes, Town Planner. A special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals is...costs $200. It is likely that the town manager would waive that fee if it was a town board or committee for that event. There's also a public hearing notice that's required, a notification of a butters within 300 feet. There's a fee from the assessor to generate that. There's also a legal notice required in the local newspaper, which runs approximately $80 to $100, has to be notified twice in the paper. And at this time, I don't believe there's ever been an event that has not been approved. The timeframe for that process to happen is approximately two and a half months.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it appears that we're ready for a vote on Article 35. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All those opposed? That is a near unanimous vote, certainly more than two-thirds, and I do so declare. We have addressed Articles 36 through 42 on the consent calendar, and will now proceed to Article 43.
Thirty-nine.
Oh, did I forget 39? All right. That's right. Yes, we took that one off. Sorry.
Thank you. Peter Wallace, 355 Heathbridge Road. I'm on the Public Works Commission, and I'm speaking for the commission.
All right, and this is solid waste disposal fund expenditures. This is an enterprise fund. Can we have a second? Thank you.
The town operates a solid waste and recycling program through Concord Public Works. The program is a fee-based pay-as-you-throw program, and the purpose of this program is to fund such services as the weekly solid waste collection, the dual-stream recycling, bulky waste disposal and recycling, composting and organics disposal, residential household hazardous waste disposal, and the development of additional sustainable waste management Next slide, please. Article 39 will enable the town to pay for these services through the subscriber rates. The annual fee for fiscal year 2020 is $272, plus $1.50 for each barrel or bag that you place by your curb. Next slide, please. When the town's program is compared to other private options, it clearly shows the average subscriber on the town program pays less. Basically, if you're putting out two barrels or less per week, the town's program's a better deal. Please consider the town program. Several questions were submitted...next slide, please. Several questions were submitted to Public Works to be addressed at Town Meeting. The first question is, how much of Concord's solid waste is recycled? The answer is, Concord recycles over 40% of its solid waste, one of the highest rates in Massachusetts. The average household in Concord generates 0.74 tons per year, which, for comparison, is less than Bedford at 0.87 tons per household per year, and Carlisle at 1.13 tons per household per year. Next slide, please. The next question is, where has Concord's recycling gone in the past, and how has it been processed at its destination? The curbside recovered materials are processed at material recovery facilities, that's MRFs, owned by Waste Management, and that's located in Avon, Billerica, and Springfield. These MRFs separate Concord's dual-stream recycling into numerous clean, uniform, recycled material streams. Next slide, please. The next question is, where has Concord recycled products gone after processing, and how is it ultimately used? After being processed at the MRFs, Concord's recycled materials are delivered to various plastic, paper, glass, and metal markets, transforming these recycled materials into new products. Next slide, please. The next question is, is Concord still able to send recycling there, and what does the market outlook? Concord continues to send its recycled materials to Waste Management's MRFs. While China has reduced its imports of recycled materials by over 90%, Waste Management has found other markets for the materials it processes. Waste Management's outlook indicates that they will continue to find markets for Concord's materials. That said, Concord will likely be impacted by the market downturn as we explore contract options for fiscal year '22. Next slide, please. The next question is, if in the future there is no longer a market for recycling, how would Concord respond? As we learned in school, the three ways to deal with solid waste are reduce, reuse, and recycle. If there is no market for recycling, we will redouble our efforts to reduce the use of the materials and to reuse materials that have already been used. Next slide, please. The final question is, does Concord offer a municipal composting service? The town currently offers a discounted backyard composting bin program, and will look to expand this over the upcoming years. Public Works is also evaluating potential expansion of a fee-based curbside food waste collection program for subscribers. Next slide. If you have any questions, by all means.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number four.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road.
Ms. Proctor.
I just want to thank you for the thoroughness of that presentation and answered many questions that a lot of us have. I'm sorry, there's not a lot of our larger audience here to appreciate your hard work and the effectiveness of that report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? That passes by well more than a majority, and I do so declare. Now, we'll go to Article 43, having addressed Articles 41, 40, 41, and 42 on the consent calendar. Okay, so this is...we'll get this up in a...yep, we'll get this up in a second. This is the motion for debt authorization for water main replacement, and we need a second for this motion. Thank you. And we'll hear from Mr. Terry.
Jim Terry, 368 College Road.
It's coming. Okay. Your slide will be here any minute.
I can get going.
You can get going?
Yeah.
Get going.
Article 43 requests $4 million debt authorization for Public Works' water main replacement program. The article authorizes the treasurer to borrow $4 million for the repair, reconstruction, renovation, replacement, and design costs associated with Concord's main water distribution system and water system infrastructure. The borrowing will fund a multi-year water main replacement program to maintain a portion of Concord's 133 miles of water distribution system and over 1,300 fire hydrants. Funding will be used...oh, you don't know anything, do you? Funding will be used as contingency funding, if required, for ongoing water system replacement improvements at the Ingersneck Hill and Pine Hill reservoirs, and water pump station improvements and the Nagog Pond Water Treatment Plant-associated infrastructure. The borrowing is part of the town manager's five-year capital program and is funded through the Water Enterprise Fund, not through your taxes. Water, okay? We all pay for water. That's where it's going to be paid for. More than a decade ago, the American Water Works Association announced that a new era was dawning, the replacement area, in which our nation would begin to need to be rebuilding the water and wastewater systems bequeathed to us by earlier generations. The seminal report, which entitled "Buried No Longer: The Dawn of the Replacement Area", highlighted the significant investments that will be required in the coming decades if we are to maintain the waters and wastewater systems that are essential to our use currently. One of the most meaningful measures of a successful infrastructure management relates to the frequency or infrequency of interruptions of service resulting from water main breaks. Water main breaks occur for a number of reasons: age of the pipe, pressure surges, and cold water...or cold weather. We've got a lot of those things. The Water Research Foundation reports that an average number of water main breaks in North America is 25 breaks per 100 miles of water system...or water pipes. Remember, we have 133 miles. The goal is to have less than 15 breaks per year. How has Concord done? In the last 10 years, the average break has been in single digits, and in 2008, the crews responded to only four emergency breaks. However, two of them were on Potter Street. And in fact, that's going to be one of the things that we'll be working on shortly. Well, you still don't have any pictures, do you? This is kind of boring.
Well, and I have to tell you, it's really too bad, because there's a lot of good pictures in this presentation.
I was going to show you a map that shows all the water mains and how old they are, but you're not going to get to see that. Lots of different colors. Oh, okay. He's working on it. Okay.
The computers are tired.
Okay. Some of our pipes are as old as 110 years old. So...but I actually asked the Public Works Director, are those the ones that we really have to worry about next? And he said, actually, no. Those are actually very well constructed, and they're buried far enough down so we have not had any problems with them. Okay. So over the last few years, the CPW, Concord Public Works, has been spending more money on water main replacements. A few years ago, it was in the $300,000 range; recently, it's been the $500,000 range. We're now asking for $4 million, but it's for a multi-year project, because some of the projects that we're going to be working on are fairly expensive. Still no pictures. This is terrible. Okay. I'm going to have to shorten this way up. Oh, gosh, there's actually a couple of pictures of...it's going to show you where we're going to go, and do it. Okay. Two of them, the larger wastewater replacement projects identified in the next years are at Silver Hill and Turning Hill, Turning Mill, approximately 7,000...I'm going to give you the details here. 7,000 square feet...or feet of 9-inch pipe put in about 1950. It's located in the Peter Spring, Prescott Road, Minuteman Drive, and Arrowhead neighborhoods. And, this is the Potter Road, about 1,000 feet of the 1930s cast iron water pipe along Potter Street. The other major project that's going to be worked on is over 5,000 square feet of water main along Silver Hill, Turning Mill, and Crestbrook Road neighborhoods are also scheduled. You still can't see anything. Okay, I'm going to get out of here pretty quickly.
Whoa.
Oh, okay, we're way behind. If we can keep going. Go back to the map if you could, if you can.
It says it's pictures.
Oh, you can't see the pictures, the colors quite as well as I had. CPW was well aware that anytime we're doing water main work, we're going to disrupt the neighborhoods. But we're going to be doing it when there is going to be road work done, or where there's going to be other work done, maybe at the light plant or utilities. So a lot of the scheduling that we try to do is to do it at the same time those kind of projects are going to be done, so it's done once, and it's done well. We're going to talk to the residents and the businesses that are going to be in the area. You're going to have meetings and notices as to what's coming out and things like that. We appreciate your consideration, and we hope you will vote for this article. Quick pictures there. Oh, there's some good...okay. Now, this is the Potter Street where there was disruption, and where you can see people working, fixing the water pipes.
Okay. Microphone number three.
Christian Kruger, 85 Alcott Road. I just have a quick question. I live on Alcott Road, as I just said, and you guys just replaced our water main, and that was really nice. The road is now really nice, but there was a long period of time where it was like it was a minefield. I'm just wondering how long we think these projects are going to take. I'm in favor of them, but I want to know how long we're anticipating.
I have an expert coming.
Microphone number two, please.
Rich Rain, Public Works Director. Independence in Alcott was done last year, as you say, with a water main replacement. Significant drainage was also done at that time. What we typically do is, as Jim says, we reclaim the roadway in the same construction season. We do a binder course pavement for that, so that's basically the first layer of pavement, let the road settle out, go through a freeze-thaw cycle, then we come in and we actually do a top course pavement. So that's a series of two construction seasons. We would expect the same with both of those projects that Mr. Terry had mentioned.
So it's going to be a fairly rough winter.
Madam Moderator?
Would you like to address that the...
I cannot predict the rough winter. We're praying for a less winter than we just recently had.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Microphone number four.
Beverly Bryant, 175 Conan Street.
Ms. Bryant.
I haven't been following the Nagog Pond issues. Can you speak to that? Are we in litigation or something, or not?
Mr. Rain, you may be limited in how much you can say, but perhaps you can provide an overview. Microphone number two?
That's exactly right. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. Rich Rain, Public Works Director. We are in active litigation, so I'll have to be careful of how much detail I release at this point, but we've...we are litigating with Littleton at this time, the town of Littleton, and it has to do with the water rights. And the two issues that we are dealing with are the Water Management Act versus the 1884 Regulation, and we...1884 statute. And we are currently in a land court trial, actively making our case that the Water Management Act supersedes the 1884 regulation, and because of that, the water rights are Concord's alone. We have a hearing, a briefing, coming up on April 19th, so next week. The, we have a hearing, a briefing, coming up on April nineteenth, so next week we'll be delivering our briefing papers, and there is a hearing scheduled in early July, at which time we'll be presenting that to the land court.
Thank you very much. Just a follow-up?
Yeah, to clarify, the money that's being spent on the Nagog Pond Treatment Plant, presumably, you're going to make sure that that doesn't, if you lose the case, that you won't lose the --
Yeah, so that's actually not within the scope of this article, but certainly, you can answer whether the money within the scope of this article is --
Sure. So, we're being very strategic about our investments at Nagog Pond. It's a significant water treatment plant investment in the area of over twenty million dollars. There are some immediate needs at that location. In fact, as Mr. Terry had mentioned, we have pipe that is nineteen oh-nine in age, cast iron pipe, that's the raw water intake. That is an authorization that town meeting had provided several years ago through a sixteen and a half million dollar bond. We'll be moving forward with that replacement, because when that pipe goes, we have no water to, that we can, we can pull from Nagog Pond. The larger investment, we are, we are waiting until at least the first portion of litigation is decided, which we hope will be sometime in the fall of this year, and then at that point, we'll make a decision on additional investments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments on Article forty-three? The motion didn't say so, but it does require a two-thirds vote, because this is a bonding issue. So, we'll take the vote now. So, all those in favor? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Well, that carries unanimously, and I do so declare. We'll now take up our last article, which is Article forty-four. And we will hear from Ms. Hodges. And do we have a second for the motion? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. Article forty-four seeks authorization to spend money, which the town receives from Comcast Incorporated for public education and governmental services, also known as PEG. The division operates as a town entity now called Minuteman Media Network. The town currently receives four point eight of all revenues generated by Comcast for their Concord subscribers. The amount paid quarterly equates to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. An additional sixty thousand, sorry, this is really riveting stuff. Additional sixty thousand is expected to be received from the town of Carlisle for services which Minuteman Network provides to them. This graph shows the historical payment amounts received from Comcast over the past several quarters. In fiscal year eighteen, the town received a total of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We continue to see a decline in the revenues, although not significant. It's suspected to be an unintended consequence of Concord's successful broadband business run by Mark Howell and his crew. In October of two thousand and eighteen, the town assumed responsibility for the PEG services. Since that time, we've been working to develop internal operating structures and hire the necessary full and part-time staff to ensure quality program and high levels of service. All regular status positions are to be classified according to the town's centralized system and reflected in our townwide classification plan. New positions such as the Studio Manager, Technical Services, and Education Coordinators were all created over the winter months and have been accepted by the Personnel Board. A comprehensive search for our new Studio Manager was completed in March, and Anya Zelnowick began working in that role April first. We are currently recruiting for the Technical Services position, and we'll begin the recruitment for the Educational Coordinator once that's complete. Anya reports directly to the town's Public Information and Communications Manager, Erin Stevens, whose job was revised this past December to include oversight and management of the operation. We also have several part-time and per diem videographers and editors on staff. For fiscal year twenty, we are budgeted with the understanding that we're going to be conservative with our projects and revenues and expenses. Revenues have been budgeted at four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. This equates to about three hundred and fifty-six thousand in the fees from Comcast and an additional fifty-seven from the town of Carlisle. Expenses are budgeted just under three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which includes two hundred and ninety for personnel-related expenses and an additional twenty-four thousand for other operational expenses such as server maintenance, computer program license fee, internet access, and other business needs, which ironically also includes monthly fees to Comcast. General fund services indicated here as our thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. That equates to about fifteen percent of Erin Stevens, our Public Information Officer's salary, to reflect the work that she does in overseeing the PEG operation. The capital budget as seen in the enterprise budget book requests an amount up to three hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-seven, nine hundred dollars to be used in fiscal year twenty for improvements to PEG access that relate to infrastructure and other long-term planning. We anticipate approximately ten percent in capital funds to be used for the replacement and updating of equipment. We've also included for this year two hundred and twenty-five thousand in a line that we're calling supplemental space. While the town has no plans at this time for any major renovations, it's important that we have the ability to renovate or even expand upon what we're referring to as public studio space, so that PEG can remain open and available to members of the community. Having the studio located in the high school is somewhat challenging. We need to balance the accessibility of services with the student safety. It's become evident that an off-site location in the form of a small classroom, an editing bay, or something entitled a studio in a box might be the best way to go about making PEG access and cable station media available to the public. The town plans to work with members of the Public Access Advisory Committee, also known as PAC, to develop a plan of what services may be needed, either by a program or facility expansion. We're looking forward to the town's first full year running the PEG operation in Concord. There will be a number of new programs and initiatives with, have been outlined in the budget book. We're, hope that the efforts to assist the community and recognize that the PEG operation is a valuable and wonderful asset to the town, and we would appreciate your affirmative action on Article forty-four.
Thank you very much. We'll hear now from Carlin Reed. Almost.
Carlin Reed, eighty-three Wits End, Chair of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, speaking for the committee.
Ms. Reed?
Madam Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, please support Article forty-four, the PEG funding article, to continue providing PEG access TV services in Concord, online and on TV channels eight, nine, and ninety-nine. The Select Board created our Citizen Advisory Committee in two thousand and eighteen to monitor the provisioning of PEG access services and other cable TV services as part of the Comcast Concord Cable TV Franchise Agreement. PEG services are paid for by our cable TV subscribers, not by taxpayers. Currently, there are over fifty-four hundred cable TV subscribers in Concord. This year, the PAC has been extremely active, as our town report shows. For example, we examined the PEG budget and the capital plan, and our committee determined that it is comfortable with the approach shown. We heard from about, we've heard more about the future of cable TV and the telecommunications industry from the Town Broadband Department, from Comcast, and from the Department of Telecom and Cable. We also helped the Select Board file reply comments with the Federal Communications Commission regarding PEG funding. Thank you, by the way. Our committee members listened to citizen concerns and worked to address them. At our monthly meetings, we received updates on Minuteman Media's progress and offered suggestions. Check out our webpage for minutes and other relevant documents. Soon, you'll see our next project, which is a PEG survey asking for your preferences on programming. You should see this in your mailbox and online later this month. In sum, please support Article forty-four to keep Minuteman Media Network rolling. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll open the floor for comments and questions. I see Mr. Allen approaching the microphone. I have a second. Thank you. Microphone number three.
David Allen, Heathbridge Road. Madam Moderator, thank you. I have an amendment to offer. May I approach the podium?
Well, we have it. And do we have it? We have it on the screen there.
May I approach the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, I thought you were talking about my podium. You mean that one. It is midnight after all.
You're very fine to stay to this hour. Try to make it worth your while. This is a bit complicated, but I failed to request at least three minutes. Here I am at the mic, asking if I might possibly do that?
Yes, go ahead, three minutes.
Thanks. Underlying here, there are three separate issues: student safety, access to the studio, and this, actually, million-dollar reserve that the cable studio has. So, how does that play out? First, student safety. The, very, very recently, the town and the school, in discussion, have concluded that student safety requires that access to the studio be restricted during the day. Let's be clear, there is nothing, nothing more important than our student safety. In the environment that we live in nationally today, there is no higher priority than that. Now, second, that public access. Of course, cable studio is a public entity, and over a couple of decades now, there have been invested in the physical infrastructure quite substantially for production, for editing, for distribution of the video. If there's question about access during the day, we're in for a major rethink. Maybe, maybe just extreme as leaving the studio out of the high school. Finally, the third item, the million-dollar reserve that the, currently in the line item for the cable studio. FCC has, is now expected shortly to issue change in the rules, so that the funds that so far we've had to have to sustain the studio will go down, maybe dramatically. Just to bring the point home, not three weeks ago, an article in The Globe, the head of the State Association for Access Studios, who's somebody in a position to know, says "Small studios may close." She's talking to us. When your solvency, your very existence is threatened, which is obviously the case here, even though it's a shock, and I don't have anything at all kind to say about the FCC, but it doesn't change the fact they're going to do what apparently they're going to do. You gather your resources about yourself, sure as heck you protect that nut, that million-dollar reserve that you have. Now, to be very clear, we're enormously appreciative of the town staff who have stepped up to steward this really precious piece, video TV piece of the force of state here in Concord that in a year or two goes back to private stewardship, and we really appreciate their enthusiasm in proposing this extension out to Everett Street. However, when you're in a position that you don't know whether or not you're going to be here in a little bit, the first thing you do is keep your powder dry. You're sure to have a good plan, so that you can get down to the end when you're surviving, and the only things you spend your money on are those things that are, to be sure that you do survive in the end. So, this amendment, and actually, the number up there, used information available at the moment, but tonight, I see that the number should change from three hundred and forty-five thousand to three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That reflects the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number that's in the current information before us here.
So, Mr. Allen, are you able to, you're at four and a half minutes now. I'm wondering if you're close to wrapping up?
I am at wrap-up. I so appreciate your forbearance, Moderator. Thank you very much. This is a whirlwind tour, and it's almost certainly raised questions. I do hope you'll ask, of course, addressing them to the moderator. And let me say again how much we appreciate the town staff stepping up to a really challenging job.
Okay.
And really doing bang-up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for Mr. Allen's amendment? I see that we do. Okay, are there, careful there, there's ramp there and stairs there. Do we have any questions or comments on the amendment? Yes, microphone number one.
Court Booth, one forty-four Wright Road.
Mr. Booth.
Speaking as an individual. As I understand Mr. Allen's motion, it would request of the town that that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars receive more scrutiny and perhaps come back next year, and that there be given a lot of attention to the likely change in the funding formula. So I just want to check, is that correct, Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you very much. That is exactly the point.
Okay.
The two hundred and twenty-five on the extension out to Everett Street gets held off until we can get our heads together and figure out exactly how we're going to use this million dollars to keep our cable studio in town instead of losing it. Who knows how it's going to pan out, but that's exactly it, yes.
Thank you. Feel free to take that chair there, Mr. Allen, if you want to stay near in case there are questions. It looks like Ms. Hodges would like to address the amendment.
Reducing the amount to three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars would be detrimental, I think, to the progress that we're making, not to mention would likely not give us enough money to be able to provide services for the town of Carlisle, which we're hoping to expand. Again, I put the bare minimum in there. In addition to that, talking about one oh-five Everett, and that's just something that's been thrown out, but the capital plan for the two hundred and twenty-five thousand also includes other upgrades in the hopes of being able to go live from the Ripley School for the school committee meetings, to have an editing bay perhaps in the library, and to be able to go live from the Harvey Wheeler Community Center, where we have a lot of public hearings and public forums. So, I would again ask town meeting to vote affirmative action on our original motion. Please.
Microphone number four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road.
Mr. Galis.
Thank you. I'm in support of this amendment, because I don't think we've figured out exactly what we want to do with investment of that much capital in various facilities. I, you know, I'm in support, long-term, of getting, you know, cameras and things in Harvey Wheeler and other places, but I see, to me anyway, quite a bit of uncertain wiggle room here, and as Mr. Allen has mentioned, there's a question about future funding, and I do think that the public access television is still very important to our democracy here, and we ought to make sure that, you know, we don't end up with a bunch of equipment and not enough money to continue to make things this important. and not enough money to continue to make things this important service available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
If we were to reduce the funds to be spent by $225,000 or so, and with that, I'm understanding from the deputy town manager that that would have a detrimental impact for this year, is if the FCC were to say that small studios like ours couldn't be used, does the town have the ability through its fiber optic cables and such to allow it to continue without, if we had some additional funding in future years after such a decision were made? In other words, is this threat of the FCC doing something really obviate the need to invest more money, or is this a good investment regardless of what the FCC does?
Mr. Allen, we'll let Ms. Hodges answer. This was a question directed to her, I think.
We own the infrastructure, and so, yes, we'd be able to continue. How much and at what length, I think, would be a very public discussion, determining whether we want to just do the G part, meaning just, you know, tape the government meetings and farm out the public. But we own the things that are there, and in the studio, we own the cameras, we own things that are mounted in the building, so we could continue. And, yes, we would have the availability to use current broadband and other things like that.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, we're going to go to some of the speakers on the floor, and we'll give you a chance in a minute. Microphone number four.
George Corret, 148 Peter Spring Road.
Mr. Corret.
Madam Moderator, I have a question for the town employees. Recall a previous town meeting, there were probably about 10 times the number of people there, and it was strongly debated issues having to do with the town taking over this, taking over the, you know, this contract having to do with the videos. And so I was wondering, what influence did that town vote have, if any, on your current decision-making processes and your budget?
Mr. Whalen's going to address that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Let me say that the vote by town meeting gave me pause. I'm the contract awarding authority. I had signed a three-year contract with CCTV, during which time I was evaluating their performance. The town meeting vote saying that the town did not want to see the town take over that operation had me pause, but events that transpired after that town meeting vote relative to the management of CCTV convinced me that it was not a viable option to extend their contract. So I recommended that we would operate the service ourselves for a couple of years and that the Select Board, with the Public Access Advisory Committee, evaluate how the town does, and then decide whether they want to seek an outside contractor or continue the in-house service.
Microphone number two. Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to follow up on the status of that FCC decision, it is something I am watching on a daily basis, and I must say, it's in early days. The idea that it was definitely going to be affecting us is far from certain, and I think it's more like a distant cloud on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number four. Yes, as soon as next, after, yes, go ahead. Microphone number four.
Ann Hayden, 342 Sudbury Road.
Ms. Hayden.
It sounds like some things have happened. In particular, the high school has put restrictions, so all of a sudden, the public doesn't have access to the studio, which was put into the high school for public use and not just for the school use, certainly during school times and not maybe easy to get to otherwise. And it sounds also like the amount of money and how that would impact on what wants to happen. I feel like I don't have a whole lot of information, and this is a big decision to make as to whether to take money out of the budget or not. So my sense is that I would urge us to vote no on this amendment, but to basically say to the MMN that we want you to move slowly and not try to move into the Everett Studio, which would be the satellite studio, because we don't know all of what's happening. Some of the other things that that money might be spent on sound like we do want to have happen this year, but to move slowly and not do a whole lot as we see what's going to happen, so that as sort of this is advisory from me, and I would urge a vote no on this because I'm not quite sure what bad things might happen if we remove money from this budget, and we can't be here all night to try to find out and understand it. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First of all, a key misunderstanding. I've already pointed out, the number's not 345, it's 375. This was based, the 345 is based on a number in minutes, P-A-C minutes, that said the Everett Studio was going to be 255. It's now 225, so it's $30,000 less. Add $30,000, you get 375. You take out that 225,000, you're only taking out the extension over to Everett Street. You're not impacting the other capital items. I happen to leave my copy of the detail on the capital budgets back there, but I'm happy to get them out to you despite the very late hour, should you be interested. As to the imminence of a threat here, I don't think any of us here know. However, when I read that the person who represents cable studios across the state of Massachusetts, a woman who's clearly in the know, say that this is going to be precipitous for small studios, I know we've got a serious problem and that we need to be spending our capital money only for those things that are going to sustain us.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Microphone number three.
Mark Howell, 668 Innersnak Hill Road, also Chief Information Officer for the town, probably speaking with all my hats on at the moment, running the broadband business. I'd like to make the comment that the transition from CCTV to Minuteman Media Network is complicated. It's complicated as an organizational endeavor. It's complicated for a lot of very important reasons with respect to the media and government, and it is complicated technologically as well. And it is also early days for this transition. We are working very hard to responsibly use what we, I think, are well aware, is a potentially limited amount of financial capital to address these complicated issues. And the budget that you see before you is the result of a best effort to fit into our budgeting cycle with admittedly partial information around a host of very important issues. I think that limiting that budget so severely at this stage of the game would limit our options to address the important needs that we have, and I feel very confident that we will not spend money on items that would not be good for the long-term benefits of the PEG access facility that we all cherish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One point by Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I should point out that for the past 11 years, the budget, whether under MMN or CCTV, has been around the $600,000 mark, so we're actually not spending more. And the 225,000 is not earmarked for Everett Street. It is for a variety of satellite studios that might happen, and as I said in my presentation, it's up to, and that would be done with the PEG committee, so we would be working towards that. But it is not just for one building.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
William Blummer, 129 Arena Terrace.
Mr. Blummer.
I just have two simple questions based on what we've been hearing. The first is, suppose government support suddenly vanishes, as we know it might, what do we lose from the operation? Do we have an answer for that?
Well, and how about your second question?
The second question is, if that happens and we lose something that we're going to miss, what does it take to reinstate it? Do we have to have a special town meeting, or is there another means?
Okay.
That's all.
Ms. Hodges? Oh, Mr. Whalen's going to take that one. Okay.
Relative to the finances, as was mentioned during the amendment presentation, we currently have $1.1 million in funds that have been amassed in the PEG access fund, so that we have that money available going forward. And we're currently getting an income of $360,000 a year from Comcast plus $50,000 or so from Carlisle. So we have an income, and it's my, I don't know if it will be an abrupt drop, if the, I don't think it'll, if you appropriate the funds tonight for the year, beginning July 1st, for 12 months, we'll have adequate funds. Then we'll also have over $1 million for the outgoing years. So if there's, I suspected we'd have some notice of the FCC decision, and they wouldn't abruptly allow Comcast to stop paying us, but that's uncertain. Then what the town would have to face is, when the funds were fully depleted, the town would have to face the question, do we want to offset that with another source of revenue, whether it's tax support or charging fees through the broadband service or some other source of funds? Hopefully, we'd have some time to think about another way to fund the operation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer to the first question. What we would lose if that's government-type support were suddenly lost?
Money.
What part of the function would disappear? Would we lose an employee or two? What would we have to shut down?
If the funding went from $360,000 a year to zero, as I said, we'd have $1.1 million in the bank that we could tap into, but essentially, there'd be no funding. Then the town would have to decide, is that service something you would like to continue and fund on our own? That would be a question the town would face. But if they cut the money off tomorrow, we have some resources available to continue.
So that could be spent without a special town meeting?
If the town approves the funding requested under this article, we'd have a year of service provided.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Terry Ackerman, Heathbridge Road. I'd like to call the question on this amendment.
Is there a second? Thank you. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of calling the question, thank you very much. All those opposed, that looks unanimous. We will proceed to a vote. We're voting on the amendment now, and you, I just want to point out that the number is not the number that was first up there. It was first up there at 345, but the correct number is 375. It's there now. So all those in favor of Mr. Allen's amendment, please raise your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed, thank you. The amendment fails, and I do so declare, and we'll now return to the main motion under Article 44, which seeks to appropriate the $600,000 number. Are there any further questions or comments on Article 44? Microphone number five.
Ms. Suarez, 34 Everett Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking at your traveling studio, and yet there's no vehicle involved. The vehicle doesn't come into play until 2026, and rather than having installations at several places, is there a possibility at least to look at having a vehicle that's equipped as a full studio and can travel not only to the sites that we have meetings, but also it can travel like to the parade? You know, it can be there for Patriots' Day. We've borrowed vehicles in the past, and it was kind of a lot of fun, and it really gave us a really nice picture of the town. I'd just like to say that it would be, to me, rather than trying to install a studio at a set place that's used once or twice a month, and maybe before town meeting a few more times a month, and that's only for a few hours, that by looking at a vehicle that can truly travel the whole town and, you know, be used for those meetings, that that might be just a consideration, to have a real traveling studio that's on wheels. Thank you.
Microphone number three.
David Allen, of course. We failed to have the opportunity to notice some of the arithmetic from the last discussion, which is really central here. Using the town manager's numbers, it means what's available is about $1,450, something like that, 110 plus the 300 plus, plus the 50. The deputy town manager's number of the budget number from the past and the number this year of 600,000, you subtract that from the 1450, and you see that we've eaten into our 1.1 capital reserve, which we're going to need every bit of if things go south here. Obviously, we should vote for this motion. It's crucial for our studio, but we don't want to be deceived. We don't want to miss the simple things like the arithmetic. We want to get it right.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 44, thank you very much. All those opposed? Well, that's a vote, and it's unanimous, or nearly unanimous, and I do so declare, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? I think everyone needs a bumper sticker that says, "I stayed till midnight." Thank you all.[1795.83][1795.83][applause]